All right. Okay, we got ringers off and all that stuff. All right. Okay. Everybody ready?
No. Yes.
Yeah. All right. Okay. All right. And welcome everyone to the City of Winter Springs regular city commission meeting of Monday, August 11th, 2025. Christian, would you call the role, please?
Mayor Kevin McCann.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Cade Resnick.
Present.
Commissioner Paul Diaz.
Commissioner Victoria Bruce.
Present.
Commissioner Sarah Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Mark Caruso.
Here.
City manager Kevin Sweet.
Present.
City attorney Anthony Agar.
Here.
Wonderful if we could all stand for the invocation being provided by Reverend Kyle Stewart and be followed by the pledge.
Could you join me in prayer? Gracious God and Heavenly Father, I thank you for the privilege of being citizens of these United States of America. I confess that as a nation, we have sinned against you in thought, word, and deed, and yet you have not brought us to ruin, nor even withheld your abundant grace from us. Amid international turmoil and even unsettling news from our nation's capital today, I ask that you would be pleased to give us hearts that are justly grateful to you and for the grace to incarnate that gratitude and faithfulness in every sphere of our lives, even here tonight. As these are elected officials, civil servants, and citizens gathered to conduct the business of Winter Springs, I thank you for the peace and safety that you have given us, and I ask that you would give us the will to do everything necessary to preserve it for generations to come. I ask that you would bless our mayor, Mayor McCann, deputy mayor Resnick, commissioners Baker, Bruce, Caruso, Diaz, city clerk Dowen, city manager Sweet, city attorney Garganesay, and their families for their dedication and service to our city. And likewise, be pleased to bless our law enforcement and emergency services personnel who never cease to put their lives on the line so that we might enjoy ours. I ask these things in the name of your son, Jesus Christ, and by your spirit's power. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So that brings us to agenda changes. Now, I do understand that Commissioner Diaz had asked for item 501, 502, and 503 to be added to the agenda, but he is unable to be here tonight. Our prayers go out to him. Hopefully, everything, whatever is going on with him is, he's okay. But I guess I'm looking for some consensus from the commission. He, in writing, he asked for item 501 and 502 to be dropped from the agenda because it wasn't going to be here. Should we drop all three of the items since he brought them up and then just allows to have his, so he has his time to discuss?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're dropping item 501, 502, and 503. Any other changes to the agenda? No? Okay. Seeing none, then other than that, those three changes, we will adopt what's left of the agenda as written. And that brings us immediately to this item 100, City Stormwater Projects Update, being provided by David Hamstra, our partner at Pegasus Engineering. And Cleat, I apologize if, our utilities and director. Ladies and gentlemen, this is, before Cleat gets started, I'd really like to, this is really valuable, really, really important update, I think, for all of the residents to see the work that's been forthcoming over the last, oh, I'd say at least three years. Our partners and the directors and city staff have been working very, very diligently to protect the residents of Winter Springs, and we're going to get a real good inside look at exactly what they've been doing. With that being said, sir, thanks for your patience.
Thank you, Mayor McCann, city commissioners. I'm Cleat Sonnier, the director of Public Works and Utilities, and it's my privilege tonight to introduce to you the city's stormwater management consultant, David Hamstra, with Pegasus Engineering. For the past 40 years, David has been involved in planning, designing, and constructing over 1,250 stormwater assignments, ranging from comprehensive stormwater master plans to neighborhood drainage improvements altogether. Under David's leadership, Pegasus Engineering has been serving the city's stormwater needs over the past five years. Assisting city staff during hurricanes Ian and Milton, Pegasus's efforts to secure critically needed state and federal stormwater improvement grants on behalf of the city has been commendable. Most of our recently completed projects and ongoing projects would not have been possible were it not for Pegasus's involvement in securing this grant funding with key state and federal regulators. David will be presenting the city's stormwater briefing tonight, which will provide an overview of recently completed and ongoing projects since Hurricane Ian, as well as a snapshot of the progress being made with the citywide stormwater improvement program and stormwater master plan. Now, just like similar presentations we provided to you in the past, there's 34 slides in this presentation, so I would ask each of you, if you could take note of the slide number, write your question down, and let's come to that at the end once David's completed, and be happy to answer any questions you have. With that, David, if you'd come up, please.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the wonderful introduction. There is a lot, and I'll try not to string this long. I hope they get done in 30 minutes, but we have done a lot, or the city has done a lot that I think we should be able to inform the public, inform the city commission, and as we head into another unfortunate hurricane season ahead of us. So, everything's good. Thank you. So, the majority of today's briefing will be the current projects, and we will touch upon quickly the grants that are available. That grant list keeps growing and growing, which is great for those who are financially strapped to get things done. And we're going to touch upon quickly the work that Kim Lee Horn is doing for the city for the stormwater master plan. So, we're going to focus on, excuse me, 14 projects this evening. These are projects that have started during Hurricane Ian and through today's current day, which has been three years. The projects listed are not in priority, they're not based on cost, or the population that serves, they're just a random listing of everything that's been going on for the last three years of the city of Winter Springs. We'll start off with Tuscaloosa Crossings, which has been around for two years, would lead into the Hurricane Ian grant-funded projects for the creeks and sediment removal. We'll talk specifically about G Creek and Moss Park, which has been recently completed, an update on Wetland Park improvements, the city hall drainage improvements right behind this building, East Trade Winds, which was recently completed by Public Works, what's lies ahead for the Deer Run Pond, a recent evaluation we're doing for Northern Way as it interfaces with Bear Creek Estates. Then we're going to lead into a quick update on the three Hurricane Ian FEMA-funded projects, acquisition of one home, elevation of three, and flood proofing of 12 city sanitary lift stations, circle back to NRCS on the Kern-Milton-funded projects, Torquasso Park improvements, and we're going to wrap things up with the Ferris, Fairway Oaks, relining and sediment removal project. So with that, I'll get started. So, for those in the audience that have not heard about Tuscaloosa Crossings, I'll try to orientate you on the screen. We've got the Savoy right off to the left, this is a central town, central crossing bridge over 434, and this is what we call as Pond One. August 31st of two years ago, we had a burn failure right at this general location, had nothing to do with a storm or a hurricane, it was just a random failure that, as we got further into it, appears to be a construction defect. Since that time, we have worked closely with the Water Mansion District and the city to get this approved and permitted, and I'll forbid fairly soon. This is what it looked like the day after the August 31st failure. It emptied the pond from talking to the neighbor, literally a matter of hours. It emptied the whole pond out into the wetland and eventually the lake Jessup. In order to try to bring the pond back into somewhat of a compliance with the Water Mansion District, primarily because we're still getting water from the residential area that has pesticides, fertilizers, debris, we couldn't just let the water go unattenuated directly to the wetland, directly to Lake Jessup. So, the city hired a contractor of June of last year to kind of put some dirt in there temporarily. It's held up nicely, thank goodness, through Milton, but it is temporary. This will be removed and replaced with what we call a sheet pile wall to make it more stable. The failure happened to occur basically on an old stream bed that crossed the railroad and got to Lake Jessup, and that little old stream was the Achilles heel when it failed two years ago. So, where are we at this point? The current engineer's estimate is still just a tad above $2 million. We have secured approval from the city back in March of this year. We recently got our permit from St. John's after going back and forth on some wetland issues. On June of this year, we have provided the city a full set of bid documents, which is plans, specs, bid forms, and estimate, and I believe within the next week or two, Holly Quinn and my senior engineer Greg will get that thing bundled up and on the street for public advertisement for construction bids. Our goal, obviously, is not to start construction in the summer, that would be the worst time with the rainfall and the hurricane season. Our goal is to start in October or November. This probably will take nine months, start to finish with all the regrading and work that's got to be done, but we hope to get the vast majority of it during the dry season, if the weather permits. All right, go back a couple of years with Hurricane Ian. NRCS, which stands for National Resource Conservation Service, which is a federal, federal program for the government, they award grants and funding for things related to erosion, not for flooding. They usually let FEMA come in first, FEMA distributes funding, funding for flooding. Once FEMA's kind of done, NRCS comes in their heels, and then it offers cities and counties financial relief to fix their erosion problems and washouts throughout the cities and counties. So, for Ian, we had Bear Creek, G Creek, No Name Creek, Sheola Creek, and Owl Creek. What you see on there, all those little circles and squares are just basically photographs that were taken when Zulu walked through there, right at the event to kind of earmark and tag the problem areas that would be set out for bids later on. And this is just an example, this is G Creek, No Name Creek is parallel to the south, and they kind of merge together and cross 434. Speaking about 434, you may wonder why DOT's been out there for so long at 419 and 434. That Culver Crossing that flooded during Ian was significantly impacted by, I would say, tons of sediment that was blocking a vast majority of the pipe. They'd been out there for several months dredging all that material to get out there and fixing the pipe. I hope and pray that moving forward, that will provide a tremendous relief moving forward when needed for G Creek, No Name Creek, and Little How Creek, as all those converge and cross 434. Besides the debris cleanup, we have what we call sediment removal, and this is accumulation of sediments as the water contracts and expands at different Culver crossings throughout the city. If you've been out there following a big storm, it looks like a big sandbar that accumulates either upstream or downstream of the Culver crossings, and during Hurricane Ian, we had identified 10 locations, and those were removed by a different contractor, and both the debris removal and the sediment removal for Ian has been closed out, everything's been submitted as of late 2024. The good news is, we were below budget, or the city was below budget with the money we got from NRCS, so we were able to ask and get additional funding to dredge five ponds with six outfalls with the Hurricane Ian dollars, and that was appreciated by the city to get that added to the scope of work. The next project involves G Creek at Moss Park. I'll back up on it a little bit. This is Moss Park. Right here, this is the G Creek crossing. During that Hurricane Ian, the outside bank of the creek next to the playground equipment was severely eroded, and NRCS stepped up and was able to fund a $750,000 repair job for the creek. Primarily involves a sheet pile retaining wall on the outside of the creek where the water's the highest velocity, a lot of armoring next to that before it crosses the creek. And I'm pleased to say that's been closed out as well. This is before and after photograph. This is where the erosion took place on the outside bank, and this is the sheet pile wall with the hand railing, and what you see below the water, don't see below the water, is rocks and rip raft to protect the base, the canal. Next project is Wetland Park. This has been around for a couple of years. I'll explain, there's two different slides on this. We got the top one, it's Tuscaloosa Road, where it crosses the trail. If you've been at the high school pond and cross, there's these large circular concrete, looks like a missile silo, next to the trail. Based on where they were located years ago, when that water comes up from the bottom and spills out the top, it goes directly to Michael Blake Boulevard and has been causing localized flooding for several years at their location. The idea is to move those three large diameter structures, move them further south along the trail, so the water discharges the part of the wetland where all the storage is, so the water goes where it was intended to go, to a plan for an existing structure. Now, regarding the path, we have two options. One was to stay outside the state-owned trail right of way, and one was to go within the trail right of way. Staying outside the right of way has greater wetland impacts, which has been a problem with the district because there's very limited choices for mitigation banking. If we try to move the structures within the state-owned right of way, we have to go through a leasing permission through the state, which is a very time-consuming process. We're going to engage a dialogue fairly soon with the state, tell them the hardship we're going with, with the St. John's option of significant wetland impacts, and see if granting a lease would be something the state would support, so we can revise the plans, get the permits secured, and move forward with this project. The bottom half of the image is along Michael Blake Boulevard. We're going to put a very low-profile retaining wall to kind of hold the water back and funnel it to several inlets beyond the wall to make sure that water's captured and doesn't spill onto Michael Blake Boulevard. So, just as I suggested earlier, we submitted the application a year ago in September of 2024. There's been several requests for additional information. We've been asking for extensions to try to find the path with the least resistance between the state lease and the Water Mansion District wetland criteria. Going small scale for a change, this is right behind City Hall. There was a 40 linear feet of a corrugated metal pipe, that's what CMP stands for. It had warranted remove and replacement. The city undertook this small project to go from the inlet into the regional pond, and with a 36-inch HDP, stands for a high-density polyethylene plastic pipe, which is very durable and doesn't rust in a road like corrugated metal pipe does. Another small project. If we try to move the structures within the state-owned right of way, we have to go through a leasing permission through the state, which is a very time-consuming process. We're going to engage a dialogue fairly soon with the state to end the hardship we're going with, with the St. John's option of significant wetland impacts and see if granting a lease would be something the state would support so we can revise the plans, get the permits secured, and move forward with this project. The bottom half of the image is along Michael Blake Boulevard. We're going to put a very low-profile retaining wall to kind of hold the water back and funnel it to several inlets beyond the wall to make sure that water is captured and doesn't spill onto Michael Blake Boulevard. So just as I suggested earlier, we submitted the application a year ago in September of 2024. There's been several requests for additional information. We've been asking for extensions to try to find the path with the least resistance between the state lease and the Water Mansion District wetland criteria. Going small scale for a change, this is right behind City Hall. There was a 40 linear feet of a corrugated metal pipe. That's what CMP stands for. It had warranted remove and replacement. The city undertook this small project to go from the inlet into the regional pond. And with a 36-inch HDP, stands for High Density Polyethylene Plastic Pipe, which is very durable and doesn't rust in a road like corrugated metal pipe does. Another small project that's been recently completed by Orange County, City of Winter Springs, is the East Trade Winds Road. I do want to thank Commissioner Crusoe for being in attendance at the meeting with the homeowners. I think the meeting was very positive with his presence, the city staff and myself. Everybody was basically talking nicely and getting an option on. And so it got constructed, some swales on both sides. Where the homeowner lives at this location, water comes to the east, west, and south and floods the low spot. Kevin and his staff have constructed swales. And I will tell you, I think it was two weeks ago Thursday, we had a heck of a storm that happened at night with a lot of rain. I went out the very next morning at 7:30, and the swales are bone dry. So good to see that the water was collected in the swales. I haven't talked to the homeowner to make sure she was okay, but the swales filled up with water when I went home that night, and the next morning they were dry and recovered nicely. Another small-scale project is Deer Run Pond. Before I get started on the control structure, I do want to point out when we got extra money from NRCS, there are two outfall pipes, one in the middle and one in the northwest corner that were part of the beneficiary of the unused dollars to go out and remove the sediment sandbars within that pond. So this one was captured under Ian and completed. We are asking for this one to be done under Hurricane Milton, which the state is currently reviewing. But specifically, this project involves modifying the existing control structure, which is the image to the left. There's two things that are in warrants, that warrant an immediate need. There are boards in front of the structure that can be removed and have been removed over the years to manage the lake level either prior to or during a storm event. There's also been a series of PVC tubes that have been compromised, I guess, to keep the fish from escaping. And so the plan is to remove the boards, put more of a permanent structure in the front and to lower the top of grate so we don't have to depend on those PVC tubes to provide the same purpose. Not to get engineering, but this is the front view of the structure. We're basically going to bolt a fiber galus plate in the front. We're going to put an orifice in the front of the pond. So as it fills up, it'll draw down through that opening. And this will keep the structure being manipulated or monitored during a storm event. This discharges directly to Howl Creek. We got to make sure a pond of that size doesn't add to the hardship within Howl Creek during the major storm events. The next project is called Bear Creek Estates, and primarily involves Northern Way at the intersection with Bear, Brown Bear Courts. That intersection's had localized flooding for quite a while. The city asked us to look into the cause of that flooding, what can be done to address it. I'm going to first the slide here, and this may be hard to see. Here's Northern Way on the top. This is Howl Creek. This is Bear Golly Creek, and this is the Bear Creek Estates, or Bear Creek Estate subdivision. They have a series of pipes and inlets that drain the entire community through one very small pond. There's nobody that would be built nowadays with the current criteria. But that's what got permitted many years ago. And the Northern Way drainage system at, right before it crosses the bridge, is where the localized flooding occurs. Unfortunately, it's a private system. The city has no drainage easements to get into the existing system of Bear Creek Estates. So the plan is to sever that connection at Northern Way, have our own discharge to Howl Creek after we treat the water, and not rely upon the older system that is not performing to current standards. This is kind of a blow-up. This is the intersection of Northern Way. This is the intersection of Constance Flood. The idea is to sever our existing pipe and build a new outfall to Howl Creek with the installation of a water quality structure so we can collect the beer cans, the cups, the cigarette butts before it goes to Howl Creek. And that will be cleaned up by county staff or city staff moving forward. Now transitioning to Hurricane Ian FEMA grants. The first one involves the acquisition of one home on Holiday Lane that backs up to G Creek. This and the next two, I will say, the good news is the state has approved all three of them. They've been transmitted to FEMA. The agreements are sitting on FEMA's desk. Unfortunately, with all the turmoil gone on with FEMA and the current government, it's been slow going to get these agreements off the desk. The good news is the city did get the agreements approved for the safe room for the police station and for the generator for the Public Works Building. But we are still waiting for these next three projects to get approved so you can approve them, sign them, and get things going as far as the flood mitigation efforts. So this is simply an acquisition of the home on Holiday Lane. You'll notice the match in this particular case is a city match because we, the city, will own that piece of property when the agreement, the work is done. The house will be demolished, the utilities will be properly capped, and this property can be turned into, it can stay vacant. It could be a neighborhood park. It cannot serve any future residential construction moving forward. So this will stay city-owned, part of their inventory. They can even build a pond if they want to. Maybe they'll treat some water before it goes to G Creek. The next one is the elevation, physically elevating the structures up a couple of feet above the 100-year flood elevation. This too has been approved by the state. This too is sitting on FEMA's desk for approval. Two of these are sitting in Sheola at the northwest part of the city, right next to Soldiers Creek. And the one at the bottom is within La Hacienda Village. Again, these have been approved. On this one, the match is the homeowners paid the 25% match, not the city because that property does not belong to us once the homes are elevated. The last Hurricane Ian-funded project we're waiting on is the 12 sanitary sewer lift stations that are dispersed throughout the city. The goal of this is to flood-proof them, whether we elevate them, to make sure that floodwaters can't get in them. Once the floodwaters enter a lift station, it causes the shutdown. We can have sewage backup in homes, and so that's the goal of this. This has been approved as well. And the city's match moving forward is currently $1.1 million. And the reason I say currently, because it isn't until we actually go out in the street for bids do we know the true city's match moving forward. Back to NRCS. Now that we had Hurricane Milton unfortunate last year, they have been kind enough to work with the city very closely to afford us additional funding for more creek debris removal, more sediment removal. And since we're below budget again, they're going to allow us to add additional ponds for sediment removal. This time around, we have seven creeks listed, Sheola Creek, G Creek, No Name Creek, Howl Creek, Bear Creek, Little Howl Creek at two locations, Oak Forest and Winding Hollow. All these have been approved, and Zulu has just completed all these debris removal of the creeks. I think I saw the news the other day. And as soon as they got done and starting to wrap up their paperwork, there was an identified additional tree on G Creek just north of the power easement. And the NRCS has been kind enough to allow the city to get that reimbursed, to add that after the fact for Zulu to go back out there and remove that tree in G Creek. Similar to Leakingan or Hurricane Ian, we have nine locations within the city that have sediment removal. And again, since it was below budget, we were able to add another outfall to be cleaned up for Deer Run Pond, Solari Canal Pond, and another pond in Oak Forest since we came in below budget. Moving forward, the last couple of projects, Torcasso Park, and there's an existing ditch that runs parallel to a multi-use trail. The city would like to enclose that ditch with a pipe for aesthetics, for safety. And that is in the process of being designed by one of the city's consultants. It's been going back and forth on some review comments, and hopefully those can get resolved in the near future, and this could be enclosed moving forward. Last of the 14 projects, and I've gone really quickly for you, Kevin. The last of the 14 projects is what they call Fairway Oaks. These were things that were on your agenda back, I believe, in May and June and April that Cathcart Construction has been authorized to do some sediment removal and some pipe replacements. Again, we had another corrugated metal pipe. That's what CMP stands for. And that has been replaced. And then there's also because of the aftermath of the Milton, there was a large sediment deposition, the pond, that got approved to be removed as well. Now, since I was here five years ago, the amount of buckets available for funding was pretty limited. It was primarily FEMA, and FEMA kind of swoops in after a major event. NRCS, which has been a great partner for the city. But since that time, there's been other programs moving forth that we may benefit from and to continue to monitor. I'm just going to highlight a few of these. I'm not going to go over every one of them. CDBG is Community Development Block Grant. This is DRs for Disaster Recovery. MIT is for mitigation. These two are HUD dollars, not FEMA dollars. These are HUD dollars that are given after a storm event. They do have a focus on low to moderate income areas. So sometimes it limits our options with the Winter Springs to pursue that funding. Not to go over your head there. Elevate Florida is a brand-new program that started after Milton. This was the state's way for the Division of Emergency Management. They decided to take some of the hurricane dollars and set them aside and basically work one-on-one with the homeowners to either acquire, elevate, or demo and reconstruct their house directly instead of going through the Hazard Mitigation Program. So it is a beta test site. We're not quite sure how well this is going to take traction and work out. We've done a lot of residential mitigation. There's a lot of handholding to residents. I just, I fear that may be lost, but I hope the state has enough staff people to walk the residents through to stop the process from start to finish. Because when you elevate somebody's house, it can be pretty traumatic. And hopefully, they'll be able to provide those resources moving forward. St. John's has provided grants for quite a while, but it's very limited. It's usually $20,000 to $25,000. Usually the juice isn't worth the squeeze on that. We try to look for bigger ones. And other ones are more water quality-driven. So these are all on the radar. The city continues to ask us to keep our eyes on these to make sure this is a good match for a future project. To wrap things up, fairly soon, we're going to have Kimley Horn up here presenting the Stormwater Master Plan to the city commission and to the public. Before I go over these dates, I do want to point out there's a chance they may shift a little bit because we've been waiting for quite a while for a study from the county that captures the majority of the east half of the city. As I mentioned to you all before, Seminole County is undertaking numerous watersheds studies throughout the county. They've been very, very beneficial to the city. They finished with Soldiers Creek, G Creek, No Name Creek, Little Howl Creek, Lake Jessup. All those were done last year. And because of that, those were given to the city and turned over to Kimley Horn to kind of earmark projects for the city. However, the Howl Creek, which is a big one, kind of captures the east half of the city. And we really didn't want Kimley Horn to be up here twice with a bifurcated Stormwater Master Plan. So we're really hoping the county can pull through soon with their consultant, provide us the Howl Creek study, and allow us to merge all the work that's already done by Kimley Horn with the results from the Howl Creek study and have a true master plan to present to you either in September or October, maybe as latest in November, depending when that study actually gets in our hand. But going with the original schedule, well, we meet on a monthly basis, myself, city staff, and Kimley Horn with Marcus and his staff. They're in the process right now of finalizing the identified drainage projects within all the other watersheds except for Howl Creek this time. They are establishing project costs for each one of those, and they're developing a prioritization program to prioritize these projects within each watershed. The goal originally was to provide the city a draft master plan by the 29th of September. And the plan was to do a stormwater workshop on October 1st. The following week, the final report would be submitted to the city. On October 13th, the city commission meeting, the city would adopt the master plan. And that same day, Raff Tellis, which is the city's rate study consultant, will present the stormwater rate study presentation. And then the idea was everything adopted and in hand by October 27th. And again, city managers welcome to correct me, but I think these are going to get bumped a little bit based on us continuing to wait for the county. And I hope it's not much longer, but that's where we stand. All right, I went as quick as I could, so we're going to ask questions and let you all resume your evening business.
Well, thank you very much for the thorough information. Open it up to commissioners first.
I'll go.
Deputy Mayor.
I'll start with Slide 32, 33. City manager, this is for you. Looking at this presentation and hearing exactly as David presented it, I would rather we have the stormwater rate study at the same time as the workshop or a separate workshop before we get that because that just is like, hey, here you go with the stormwater plan and at the commission meeting, you get the study. Is that fair? I mean, I don't know what other people think, but that just seems like the cart before the horse in my perspective because for us to get the workshop, hey, this is everything we need to do, and at a commission meeting to get the presentation of rate study. Shouldn't we have that conversation?
The reason for the delaying, if I can please interject, is Kimley Horn is establishing all the projects and all the cost. The idea was you guys would see that list and see if you're concurrents. If you are, then those costs will be given to Raff Tellis to do the stormwater update. But with that, I'll-
Right, which I understand. Then we should do a sec- to me, we should do a second workshop on that conversation. It would just be interesting because then at a meeting where we're deciding to adopt the master plan, we're also going to have to adopt the cost of the master plan at the same time. That's how I read that.
Now, the master plan was originally planned to be approved and adopted on October 13th with all the costs in there and prioritization. And then Raff Tellis would do their initial stormwater presentation. And then the following meeting would finalize that for you all to adopt the increased rates.
I think it would, on this document, if you're on page 31, if you scroll down to 31, it says rate study presentation, October 13th. And then it says rate study presentation to October 27th. Maybe that's what's confusing.
Well, it's not confusing. What I'm saying is, when you say to me, hey, this master plan is going to cost you $10 million. Okay, we can get all of that for there, but on the same day that you're going to say approving this project, we're also theoretically approving the cost of those projects. We have to theoretically approve the rate study regardless. Whereas if we find out how much it costs and also then find out how much, without having to vote, how much the rate study is, then we can look and see-
Without adopting-
Without having to adopt anything and make decisions here without having all- to me, it's all the information. We would be missing a portion of the information is, yes, we like all these projects. How much does it cost the residents over time? City manager.
Understood, yeah.
So I don't know how we work that out, and I don't know if it's to slow things down, but it's just getting all the information.
Yeah, I think particularly with the rate study, they'll be looking at it as a phased, probably a phased approach recommendation over multiple fiscal years of some kind of rate. But yeah, depending on prioritization of what those projects are completed would also tie into the rate as a whole, so.
But all I'm asking is if we could do it as workshops instead of at commission meetings to flush it out. Does that make more sense?
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense. Sure. That way, we can really take our time and dive into it because it will be a lengthy, that's a lot of information and really has big impacts.
And I know how hard staff's working. I know everybody's doing it. All I'm asking is a little slower, not months slower, but just-
Yeah, time to tear it apart. Okay. Anything else?
Yep. Slide 27, 26 and 27, which is the debris removal project and sediment removal projects. David, remind me, sediment removal starts now, or has sediment removal been going?
So debris removal just got completed by Zulu, and they're starting the month of August with the sediment removal for Hurricane Milton.
Okay. Just to add to that, there's a sediment pre-construction meeting on Wednesday. Then we'll have that. So the plan was really by mid-August to get going on the sediment removal.
Only at the Culverts. Right. Appreciate that.
At the Crossings, yeah.
So as residents have been kind of watching this, David, have we been behind Zulu checking to make sure, or city manager been behind them? Because I keep getting calls from residents, especially on No Name Creek and G Creek, saying they haven't seen anybody out there or sending me pictures, saying, is this what we're doing? So have we been behind them, watching them to make sure that the work is done? City manager, David?
I can't speak on behalf of- I can't speak on behalf of Public Works if they're literally behind them walking. I do know the government, the NRCS does require a final inspection. I will tell you that things continue to fall unfortunately. I'm glad the one big one that was brought forth, NRCS as well, and to kind of slide that in and not wait to the next storm, which I hope we don't get another one. But I'll see if there's a way we can safely with staff walk it and get what we can from, for each creek segment to make sure that it was properly taken care of, so.
Yeah, they film first and they film after, I don't know.
I was just going to say, part of that requirement that you just spoke of is that doing a video, a walkthrough like they did?
They're supposed to do before and after video, yep.
That'll show everything, then.
Okay.
Yeah, good point.
Go ahead.
As well as photo documentation.
Yeah.
Commissioner Cruzout? Ladies, anything? I think, I'll tell you, I guess a little bit of commentary and some facts, maybe to remind people of is, you know, we all know Hurricane Ian changed everything in Winter Springs. I've said it many times, that we have wastewater treatment plants that are our number one priority. We are closing in on that project and completion dates are starting to be on the horizon now. We're starting, we're moving forward. But stormwater will be an issue that this community will face for decades to come. It has been an underfunded utility that we have not done enough for since Hurricane Ian. We've spent millions and millions and millions of dollars getting work done, although some of these projects were not the first. It, these are massive moves, and I think it's, we're finally understanding the importance and getting, setting these priorities. We will need, look, we have, what, three stormwater employees and one supervisor. That's not going to be enough to manage and keep going back through and checking for fallen trees and doing these things. We're going to have to really continue for decades to make this a priority. There are other massive projects that are not included here. You drive down, if you leave City Hall and you're headed westbound on 434 and you hit the 419 split and you see all the big backhoes and all of the work being done under 434? They're removing tons and tons of sediment there, but because it, although the city's been lobbying for that work for a long time, it actually falls under the state and the county because that's their property. But that is, that one project will have a massive impact on G Creek. And anyone who lives on the south side of 434 will see a staggering difference. Would you agree for what your knowledge, am I, am I making my-
As long as I've been out there, as much dirt I've seen removed, it should definitely be a benefits.
It absolutely should. I just, I'm just, I'm encouraged that we're going to continue moving the needle forward for those residents that do live on ponds. This is, this is a significant work that's been years in the making, but it's a significant movement. But we still have to decide how we're going to handle the removal of sediment in ponds of the 73 ponds in the city and who's going to help pay for that or private ponds, do they pay for it? What's our city, you know, how do we match? How do we contribute? How do we do things? It's a heavy lift that will, again, take years of continuing to stay focused, but we have to, we also have to fund these projects. We've been very, very fortunate with our partners and all of the different government agencies that Mr. Hamster showed us. We've been very, very fortunate. But at some point, we're going to have to kind of support ourselves and live by ourselves, kind of like a kid moving out of the house. At some point, we're going to have to own these issues, and we're going to have to make difficult decisions and have the staff and the funds to continue doing it. We owe that to residents. Safety of our homes has to be number one. The 350 homes roughly that were flooded during Hurricane Ian, we have to do our part to ensure that that never happens to our neighbors again. It's, it's critical, it's going to be painful, it's going to be a lot of work, but we have to keep moving that needle forward. Thanks for the opportunity of the commentary.
Well, I'll give you a peace of mind, and I'm not going to steal Marcus' thunder, but they are also looking at staffing and equipment, not just drainage projects, so.
Yeah, equipment, we're going to need more staff and more equipment, yeah. We had a conversation with the city manager about that today. So, thank you. If there are no further questions, Mr. Hamster.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I watch the audience, nobody tells me.
Right, okay. All right, that then, let's see, informational agenda, projects and things, development projects can all be found at winterspringsfl.org. I would encourage our residents to take a couple of moments to go online and look through the city's website. It's incredibly comprehensive. You can find all of the maps of all of the dredging projects to new development projects, to new housing, to new commercial space. Everything is listed there. It's pretty comprehensive. Okay, that brings us to public input. And anyone who wishes to speak during public input on any agenda item or subject matter will need to fill out a blue public input form. Individuals will limit their comments to three minutes, and representatives of groups or homeowners associations shall limit their comments to five minutes unless otherwise determined by the City Commission. Okay, let's get started. We, first I have is Michael McCreson. Good evening, sir. And let's, so have we, forgive me, so we have not yet passed, or we passed, so we don't need a formal address, we just simply need to know whether or not you are a city resident or not?
Second reading, it's tonight.
The second reading, so as of today, then the policy holds, you still have to give your name and address for the record. I apologize.
No problem.
Housekeeping.
My name is Michael Lincoln McCray. I do not reside in Winter Springs. I'm actually from Orlando, Florida. I serve on the Disability Advisory Board for Orange County. I'm also the proud president of Magical Self Advocacy for People with Intellectual Developmental Disabilities. And first off, I want to thank each and every single one of you for the advocacy that you do for our individuals with disabilities throughout the state of Florida and throughout Winter Springs. We have had a great year this year. Our third annual Developmental Disabilities Day. Seminole County Sheriff's Office has been out to every single one of ours, and they have became a great partner of ours. I am requesting to see if you guys will be willing to do a letter of proclamation proclaiming March 29th as Developmental Disability Awareness Day here in Winter Springs because, as you guys know, you guys are big supporters for the disability community. I recently just passed a bill, which I'm sure you guys already know about it, House Bill 73, because I was a victim of guardianship abuse. If you look my name up on the internet, you will see it. But it was signed by Governor Ron DeSantis on June 14th, 2024. And as of today, state courts and all county judges are required to look at supportive decision-making before putting people in guardianship, which means that if they do not look at supportive decision-making before putting people in guardianship, they are violating the law that I put into effect. And the reason of that is a lot of guardianship abuse is happening in this state, and it's not okay. Our individuals deserve to have their rights heard and to bring awareness to themselves and make decisions just like every other human being in this city. I am willing to do as much work as possible to work with you guys to bring more awareness to the autism community and all related disabilities. One of the biggest things that I've been working on is low-income housing and transportation because that is exactly what our individual needs. And, you know, it's very expensive to live in central Florida. I paid $2,000 to rent. But it's all about our individuals, and if we don't do something soon, my concern is they're going to be on the street, taken advantage of, and they are not going to be able to live, they're not going to be able to get food, and they're going to be taken advantage of financially, physically, and mentally. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Christian, could you, do you follow up with the gentleman or, I just want to make sure that we have that information if they're asking for a proclamation that we have all of that? You okay with that?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that then brings us to Nick Berg.
I'd like to reserve until after the discussion of 500.
Okay, let me double check something. So, okay, so what we'll be doing is, just so that everybody understands, with item 500, we're going, if you would like to be heard prior to the vote, you would speak now. After the vote is taken on item 500, be it a time that you will not be able to address the commission before the actual vote because it's not a public hearing, it's the way it's legal. Sorry.
Thank you. I'm Nick Berg. I live at 203 Allegra Court here in Winter Springs, and I don't know everything about what's going on with the trees. I'm a little disappointed with some of the recent developments, that they don't have many trees around them, and just want to express my opinion, we can do whatever we can to preserve the canopy in Winter Springs.
Thank you, Mr. Berg. Appreciate that very much. Okay, and Mr. Jesse Phillips?
I am Jesse Phillips, 1124 Duncan Drive. I'm the, going to read a statement of the founder of the Winter Springs Water Quality Initiative, which has been warning my neighbors about various things impacting our environment since 2019. I consider myself a, an environmentalist by necessity, if not design. I didn't set out to be one, but the experiences of my family made me one as I started to see the effect on my family's health and realized that if we don't steward this place that God gave us, it not only affects the look of our neighborhoods, but it physically affects our bodies as well. And what seems, you know, lost in some of the discussion on tree mitigation debate is that, from the feedback I'm getting, the residents are not nearly as concerned about dollar amounts as in legal agreements as they are about the environmental impact of projects. And as I said in my op-ed that I sent out recently, I asked, will we protect the environment or just pretend to? I received an incredibly positive barrage of incoming texts and phone calls in support of what I called Option B, which is going back to the table and talking about the real mitigation steps that we could possibly take on projects like this. And the feedback told me that the money isn't the issue, the issue is the impact of the projects. And I looked at the Arbor Fund and some of the budget projections because it was being presented as the vehicle through which the city mitigates impact. And so my projections are roughly estimating, based on some information I've got from reliable sources, including the fiscal year 2025, '26 tentative budget, about 5% of the Arbor Fund goes to the Arbor Day Tree Giveaway. Around 80% of that fund is what's called R&amp;M, Repair and Maintenance, which I think arguably is repairing and maintaining trees, and the rest is administrative overhead. And so nobody's complaining about money going into the Arbor Fund in the abstract, but in this context, putting it there does nothing to directly mitigate the environmental damage of a specific project. And from an environmentalist perspective, taking $200,000 and change from trees being cut down in one place and using that money to cut branches off of trees in other places is not conservation, it's beautification, which is a good thing, but it's not mitigation. Instead, I think you should ask the developer to submit a list of mitigation steps that they're willing to take to ensure that the money is used to mitigate against the damages to the environment instead of being lost in the administrative costs of an Arbor Fund. So we've submitted records, and I'll be sharing more of the information that we've got, and I've got a few more seconds, but please take a look at this from an environmental impact standpoint, not purely a financial impact standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you. Marie Cashin?
I'd like to withdraw my request.
Okay, nice to see you. Judy Bonstadt? Don't read handwriting, I apologize. Good evening.
Judy Bonstadt, I live at 1170 Talmud Street, Winter Springs, Florida. And Victoria, you were nice enough to email me back, you know, about the situation with the senior place. It's basically what is actually going on? Are they going to actually develop it over there by 434 in Talmud? Because it's just like a big dug hole.
Yeah, just for the record, so public input isn't actually, believe it or not, time for immediate responses and back and forth, but what we're going to do is get somebody to call you. I think with the city manager, my understanding is it's, the project is stalled somewhat, but it's slowly moving forward.
I've heard funding and all like that is what I've heard.
We're not going to get into question and answers, but it's your time to be heard and to make kind of a statement. Can someone follow up with the resident?
We appreciate it, okay.
Yep, and so we have your phone number on here, and you, we have an email address.
Yes, email address, and Victoria's got it too.
Okay.
Can I mention just one thing about this storm drainage? Is there anything about the Soldier Creek area? Do you know anything about that?
Yeah, we could, again, that's one of those things where we'll get back to, we'll have somebody contacting, we'll give you, right? Go down to kind of a trail and then all of a sudden, yeah, right, thanks.
All right, thank you.
It changes the agendas and things like that. Okay.
Good evening, I'm Allison Turnbull Jones, 1508 Highland Road in Winter Park. Paul and I are here this evening to request a continuance for item 500. We feel that an item that has been this controversial and that is of this importance to the city deserves to be heard in front of a full commission. So we would respectfully request that this item be continued to the next commission hearing, and we'd be happy to discuss that or answer any questions that you may have, but we do feel like it should be heard in front of the entire commission.
So do we, yeah, we can talk about that when we reach item 500. So this is public input, you've been heard, and we'll talk about it when we reach item 500.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Solid, thanks, yeah. I think that's fair. Okay, anyone else that would like to take this opportunity?
Leah Wiseman.
Oh, Ms. Wiseman.
We did forget, you didn't, didn't give it to her. We should just assume.
Yeah.
Leah Wiseman, and last time I have to say this, I guess, 113 Brookshire Court. You probably all memorized it by now. I'm happy to say that you are moving on some more ADA spot, you know, projects such as spaces where there isn't any. And I think the only reason why was it saw the purpose of the spots and the curb cuts is not that I tried to say, well, over, there's no place to point a map. We went out there. I said, see, the next spot you can find is way over there, and they got the idea. We really need, I think, for planning too, is have maps of at least the big parks. I mean, I'm not talking about the local neighborhood parks that have two swings and a slide or something, but a lot of places do not have access to water unless you can take a step up and things like that. And you maybe have someone checked it all out and made a list, I don't know, because no one tells me. But I'm just very concerned, without maps, you're not going to get the whole picture. You build new right next to something that's old that they can't get, and people can't get to because they didn't refurbish it. Technically, by law, anytime you change something, you have to change it for everything. Like if the road on Central Winds Park, when they made it a few, what was it, six inches up, they should have fixed this, also more curb cuts and the spots. So it's just not a big picture, I think, until someone puts in a map unless you want to walk around with the parks with me, and I don't think anyone wants to spend that kind of time. So I'm just asking that the big parks like Trotwood Park, and it would be having maps, and that way I can just draw on them and say, oops, and then I can hand it to you and not waste your time traveling around parks with me, especially since I walk so slow.
Anyone else that would like to take this first opportunity? Anyone else that would like to take this first opportunity? Mr. Gallo.
Evening, everyone, R. Gallo, 199 Nandina Terrace. With reference to regular agenda item number 500 concerning Arbor Fees, there's far too much attention on side issues. What I call here chaff launches, that have no real relevance to this agenda item today. And like chaff, have served to unnecessarily distract the commission from the only real question, did the developer pay all of their required Arbor Fees per the contract? Chaff launch number one, the mayor voted or vetoed, the mayor never voted on this issue or vetoed it. He only expresses concerns based on what he knew and believed to be true. As required by the city charter, he represented only the best interests of the residents of Winter Springs, as well as the entire city as a whole. An agenda item to reconsider was made, seconded, discussed, and legally approved by the commission. Chaff launch number two, Robert's Rules of Order not followed. Per city charter, section 227D, Robert's Rules of Order shall be the, quote, "underlying foundation," unquote, for the conduct of commission meetings, and will be followed to the extent practical, and I quote, "practical and feasible." I argue here that both relevant and critical information was not presented to the commission by the developer's legal representative during the 23 June commission meeting, see agenda item 404, and that this case, that's a case, this is a case where strictly following the Robert Rules of Orders was therefore not required, nor in the best interests of the residents of Winter Springs or the city as a whole. Chaff launch number three, the reconsideration request does not meet city requirements. I have already explained the Robert's Rules of Order need not be followed in this situation. The burden of proof, as detailed in city charter, section 2-30, paragraph 5 states, quote, "The applicant seeking approval of an application has the burden of proving that the proposed application is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and complies with all of the applicable substantive criteria and procedural requirements of the city code and other applicable provisions of law," unquote. The application in this sense is focused on the correct interpretation of the contractual agreement, as it pertains to the proper payment of Arbor Fees, that's it. Chaff launch number four, quasi judicial versus legislative function. City staff advised the commission that Arbor Fee discussions were a, quote, "contract interpretation," unquote, issue, not a code or ordinance issue. The commission could rescind the prior action previously, commission could rescind the prior action previously approved by a majority of the commission, if a majority vote, if a majority voted to do so. Commissioners who originally voted for the original issue saw the new evidence, and rightly, and bravely, I might add, decided on 14 July, agenda item 501, that a new look at this contractual issue made sense. The vote was three to two in favor to reconsider the original vote. None of these four arguments are relevant to your final decision today, if it is today, which is to review the evidence provided and then interpret the contract as it pertains to Arbor Fees.
Mr. Gallo.
And answer the one question.
Rep, thanks.
Almost done. Did developer pay all of their required Arbor Fees per the contract? Based on the evidence provided, that's the only question that needs answering, nothing more, nothing less. And there's one lesson learned here, it's write better contracts.
Thank you.
I ask that this gets put in the record.
Thank you, appreciate that. Anyone else? Ms. Schaefer.
Gina Schaefer, the Winter Springs Village. I'm here to speak about the Arbor Fees for the Blake Commons Plot Area and Seahawk Cove Extension Project. My question is, if you, as a commissioner, are not sure, if you feel that you do not have enough information, why at the commission meeting did you not table the Arbor Fee issue and ask for more information? One commissioner stated that she felt bullied, which makes me feel very sad for the commissioner. Our city manager was not here at this meeting, but our city attorney, that has been with the city for 26 years, gave us advice. I believe that our commission should have listened to our city attorney, and not listened to the attorney for Seahawk Cove. She treated the case, which she treated it like a case, about the amount of money that the Arbor Fee was, and she treated it like this was a court of law, which it is not. The past mayor also talked about the project, and met with a few of the commissioners. The commissioners for District Two stated to Channel Six that, she said, city staff, specifically planning and zoning, did not provide commissioners enough information at the June 23 meeting. She said she got her information from the meeting directly with the developers' representatives. So that is the second time that commissioner has gone and gotten information like that. And I'm referencing when she also spoke of getting rid of the city manager out publicly, and asking, how do we get rid of our city manager? I also think that it is interesting that the District One Commissioner will not be here to go on the record for his vote for the Arbor Fee, which is kind of like a real cheating way of not being here and not making a presentation. I was on the planning and zoning, and I never saw one of you commissioners that presently sit on this commission at any of the meetings when I was on there. I believe the applicant must prove, just like Mr. Gallo said, they must prove it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to take this first opportunity? Okay, then we'll end public input at this time, and then, just as a review, real quick, we do a first public input. There are different parts of this agenda, there's consent agenda, then there's public hearing, there's two things under public hearing. Items under public hearing, you will have an opportunity to talk about those very specific issues. But when we get to the regular agenda, which is the Arbor Fee falls under, there's not a direct public input before that vote. I know it's confusing. Then at the end of the meeting, we'll have yet another time for voices to be heard in a final public input. I know that's a little confusing, but want to try to, sometimes there's public input, sometimes there's not, it's a legal thing, it, little confusing. Okay, let's move right on then to the consent agenda. If, before we make a motion, I would like to just make one point on item, specifically item 301, the hometown hero nomination. It's, I don't want this to sound like self-serving, Mr. Gallo, I appreciate what you talked about. I know that you were one of the, I believe it was three finalists on that list that went. We have a gentleman that the veteran and families advisory board recommended, Mr. Keith, the bachelor, wow, truly an impressive resume, Delta Force, Purple Heart, Bronze Stars, not one, multiple Bronze Stars. And the gentleman, I'd really love to have a cup of coffee with this guy, but at the same time, Mr. Gallo, you know, I know you've just said some complimentary things, I haven't spoken to you in weeks, but those other folks that have served, that may not have made that final name, sir, you're here constantly, for years, working for and doing deep, sometimes we agree on items, sometimes we disagree on items, but your consistency in serving your community, it's greatly appreciated. And I just don't want other folks to think that, their name may have been put in, they didn't get the actual award this year, but it does not stop us from being truly grateful to all of our veterans. They have truly served our community, and most continue to do so, like Mr. Gallo and the many others. So I just want to say that, and that this is not in any way a slight, or saying that somebody else isn't good enough. This is something that the Veterans Advisory Board put forward, and, boy, it is impressive. So with that being said, any other comments about items? Then I'd ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion is made by the deputy mayor, resident.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Baker Christian.
Deputy Mayor Resnick.
Aye.
Commissioner Crusoe.
Aye.
Commissioner Bruce.
Aye.
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
And motion passes unanimously. That brings us then to public hearings agenda. Item 400, second reading of ordinance 2025-12, amending charter, or chapter two of the city code related to city commission rules and procedures, and we do not need.
No, sir.
So.
It's ordinance number 2025-12, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Winter Springs, Florida, amending the city of Winter Springs Code of Ordinances, section 2-27, regarding city commission rules and procedures, and section 2-28, addressing the mayor and city commission, providing the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions incorporated into the code severability and effective date. Second and final reading, mayor, also a public hearing, presenting two proposed changes to the commission's rules of procedure that have been requested by the commission, there have been no changes since first reading. Mayor.
Okay, before we go to public input, is there any discussion? No? Again, I, like, I'd like maybe just make one sentence. This is in no way will we ever stifle or stop a commissioner from being able to add things to the agenda, or in any way try to stifle their voice. That is not what this is about, and I think the proof will be in the pudding. Anyone that would like to specifically be heard, item 400? For public input? Seeing none, we'll close public input, and I'll look for a motion.
I'll make that motion to approve item 400 as presented.
Motion made by the deputy mayor.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Baker. Bacon, yeah, Christian.
Bacon.
Commissioner Crusoe.
Aye.
Commissioner Bruce.
Aye.
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Resnick.
Aye.
And the motion passes. For anyone wondering why we're giggling, I called Commissioner Baker, Commissioner Bacon one time, months ago, and it kind of keeps coming around.
He has to like, look at me and think about it every time now.
Yeah, 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 right, right, we just laugh, right, exactly, can't help it, sorry. Okay, item 401, second reading of ordinance 2025-13, granting Duke Energy Distribution Electric Service Line easements. Anthony.
This is second and final reading, and a public hearing item, ordinance number 2025-13, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Winter Springs, Florida pursuant to section 4.14 of the city of Winter Springs Charter, authorizing the conveyance of a perpetual easement to Duke Energy Florida LLC along the western property line with a width of seven and a half feet on a certain portion of real property owned by the city of Winter Springs, which is generally described as tax parcel number 28-20-30-5DR-00D0-0000, for purposes of constructing, operating, and maintaining overhead and/or underground electric transmission and distribution lines and related facilities for providing electric energy services, authorizing the mayor, city manager, city attorney to finalize and execute any documents to complete the conveyance, including but not limited to the documents approved and set forth in the ordinance, providing for severability, the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances, non-codification, and an effective date. This is, there have been no changes to the ordinance or the easement that was presented to the commission at first reading. Just to remind everyone that this is about a feeder hardening program that Duke is implementing, trying to strengthen the infrastructure in this particular area, and they're requesting a perpetual easement on city-owned property that's being utilized by utilities, in order to work on this hardening project. Mayor.
Okay, discussion? We have talked about this at the last meeting, then we'll go right to public input. Anyone have concerns or would like to be heard about Duke Energy's project in strengthening their power grid? Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion.
I'll make that motion to approve item 401 as presented.
Motion's made by the deputy mayor.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Crusoe, Christian.
Commissioner Bruce.
Aye.
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Resnick.
Aye.
And Commissioner Crusoe.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. That brings us then to the regular agenda, and really the final big topic of the evening. How shall we begin? Anthony, would you like to kind of run through any of that, or?
I think we have to first address their request.
Yeah, I agree, yeah, my apologies, we're just there. So, the discussion is, should we table the discussion and put it off yet again to the next commission meeting? Deputy Mayor.
No, my first, go ahead.
Commissioner Crusoe.
My only concern is because Commissioner Diaz is not here, would there be any legal ramifications if we were to move forward? Because I'm ready.
We have a quorum.
I mean, you have a, the city commission has a quorum, and it just takes a minimum of three commission votes on any item. And its commission's prerogative whether or not you want to postpone this agenda item to, at their request, to the next meeting.
Okay, deputy mayor.
I, you know, the applicant is here, it would delay them two weeks more as we go through this process. It does bring us all to the table, so all five of us are here. You wouldn't, you know, as our job is required for something like this. So to me, it's, I can go either way. You know, I know which way I feel about this project, I've seen all the information prior, I've seen the information now, and all we've done is thicken the information. So, like Commissioner Crusoe just said, he's ready, I'm ready. But because the applicant is making the request, I have no problem pulling it based on their request to go, since it's their project.
Commissioner Baker.
It's my understanding that they've signed a contract, and we have the money in escrow based on whether or not we pass or fail this. So they're able to move forward with their project without us voting on this tonight. But I did receive additional information, we all did, at 6:18, regarding tree removal permits from that year, and I think it's important for us to be able to review that information, whether we take a break for a few minutes, or delay this vote. I don't think it'll change most of our votes, but I think it's still nice, would be nice to review.
And that was, I would say, my fault, I requested some information that I had thought of right away, and it was a good thing I did put in that request, because that's what you see, kind of helps it a little bit more. But aside from that, however, however everybody wants to go, I'm fine.
So you're saying that the email that came in.
Right.
strengthens the city's argument?
Well, yes.
Yeah. Well, it's pages, pages long, and we haven't been able to stop and read it. I will.
That was just something else that I was working on to, say, a timeline, I would say, right? A timeline, put everything in a timeline, it was, it was helping.
For my part, I think enough is enough. I think that the only reason that this is dragging out is because of omission of fact, as I stated before, or even frankly, you know, miss, you know, really just not putting up proper facts. The data that was sent to us on Wednesday, in that endless list of documents, it really, there's information, and there were clearly, you know, the argument seems to be that defining, there's two arguments, we're defining the project, my argument is that it's very clearly defined, what is the project? It is word for word spelled out. That was left out of that original conversation, but that's in here now, and we've all seen it. The second part is, is that there's a real clear paper trail of how and why the east and west of Michael Blake Boulevard was in that original document, that was then overwritten that no longer counts, right? Or it's, the final, the final agreement is what counts. What there, what happened was, is quite simply, there was, initially the Blake Apartments was going to be on both sides of Michael Blake Boulevard, and we have lots of documentation in here, endless documentation showing the drawings of it on both sides, and then the notes from the developer saying, after public input, we've decided to move it all over to just on the west side of Michael Blake Boulevard. It's in their words, not the city's words, their words, they explain how and why they got to that decision, they moved it to the west side, and every further piece of documentation that followed calls it west of Michael Blake Boulevard. So the one line that was kind of cherry picked about being, the project being on east and west, is, it's explained how that sentence fell in there. west, is, it's explained how that sentence fell in there. That was that sentence that led the commission down the trail of not understanding, or down that whole trail of questioning what was going on. We now have all of the facts, we can drag this out further, I think, for the benefit of the city, the residents, the staff, and the developer, let's, I, I would rather just have the vote, but I will go with whatever the commission would like. I think that all we're doing.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Yeah.
Can I just, just, so that the commission has all of the information, and just clarification from Commissioner Baker's comment regarding the escrow agreement, because that has just sort of last minute change. The escrow agreement was signed and provided by the applicant, as well as the full payment of the check, but there's still two documents that were missing, which is a line of credit and/or a performance bond, as well as the proposed, initial proposed development agreement, to which that would have been held in the escrow agreement. After that had all happened, the city had taken, received the payment, made the deposit to ensure, cleared we received a request by the applicant to return the funds and, you know, at that, at that point. So, just so you, the escrow agreement was executed, has not been countersigned, and we still do not have those additional documentations that were required.
Okay.
As part of the escrow agreement, the line of credit, as well as the recommended development agreement from the first one.
Thank you.
We have received payment, and we have received the signed escrow agreement.
Okay, so then we simply need a decision.
So does this mean we're moving forward, or are we tabling it again?
So we'll take a motion and a second, and then a vote to table.
On the escrow agreement?
No, just to.
No, just to whether or not to have this discussion.
Yeah.
So, it would, if, for lack of a motion, a second, and a vote to table it, then we move forward. Is there a motion to table this discussion?
I try to finish it.
Okay, seeing none, we're going to move forward. I think in fairness, if, if the developer and their representatives want to make their case, I think it's fair to allow them to be heard. Shall we listen to them first?
Sure.
Okay.
My name is Paul Partica, I'm with NAI Real Vest. I live at 1693 Wingspan Way, Winter Springs. I'll take all comers if they want to come over to my house. I am here with my project team member, and you've met already our attorney, Allison Jones. She'll be part of this presentation. I also have Clayton Cheek, who's the project manager. Clayton, there's Clayton over there. And with full disclosure, I am also the city's exclusive real estate broker for acquisition of suitable property for the city. I've been doing that for a number of years.
Actually, point of order, man, I hate to say this, but is there actual, is that an actual title? I think that that might be misleading.
No, I have a quote, I have an agreement.
How do you represent the city and?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
This is the point of order.
I am giving you exactly what I am.
I'm asking the city attorney a question. I'm asking the city attorney a question.
Yeah.
How is that, A, does that title actually exist? And if it does so, is it appropriate for the good, sir, you've served your community well, but for him to say that he represents the city in an official capacity, but then be here representing a developer at the exact same time? Is there such, for the city manager, for the city attorney, is there such a title? And is that something that the commission has voted on, or has that been something that?
Mr. Partica has served in the capacity of assisting the city with real estate transactions in the past.
Many times, to our benefit.
That is, that is, that is correct. I mean, he doesn't serve in the capacity of representing the city regarding this property, that's for sure.
Yeah. Sir, you've done a lot of great work for the residents of Winter Springs, including representing us in, in, in real estate deals, allowing us to purchase central, well, not, but, but adding to our park system and things. But I don't think that it's fair or completely honest to say that you are the representative, and that there's a title assigned.
Listen to me, Mr. Mayor. You are now calling me dishonest.
I'm not.
Okay? I am quoting you what's in my listing agreement that I have with the city, and I use this exactly, that's why I said, full disclosure, if you want, in the files, there's a listing agreement where I am the broker, exclusive broker for the city, in acquisition of suitable property for the city. And that's been signed, that just happens to be his full disclosure.
We'll move on.
Thank you.
I think I voiced my opinion.
All right.
We'll move on.
Okay. I will speak first. Let's start with this saying from W. Clement Stone, who famously said, quote, "Truth will always be truth regardless of lack of understanding, disbelief, or ignorance," end of quote. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, and the City Clerk. First of all, let's clear up about, let's clear up things about what the City Commission can do. Under the Charter, Section 230-11A, the mayor or any city commissioner is allowed to have communications with anyone on any application, and only has to disclose this before or during the, during the meeting. That's part of your charter. Further, 2-3011C, I quote, "This subsection is not intended to preclude the mayor and city commissioners from communication with constituents and members of the public regarding the general existence or status of any application. This is part of our representative form of government that allows us, the people, to talk and discuss issues with our elected officials. Additionally, I am the city's expert on real estate, which includes trying to bring quality business building projects to the city. There are no ethics issues at all if you talk to any applicant. In fact, you should be talking to them to understand better what ideas they may have to make our city better. Members of the City Commission, do not be afraid to talk with anyone, as long as you disclose this publicly." Then, what I want to do is go through some of the documents, and I believe we have some documents that will be on the screen.
Christian.
Okay. First of all, the legal documents that concern us between the city and developer are the original development agreement dated March the 10th, 2015. The second part is the first modification of development agreement dated January 19, 2017. These are the only controlling documents for the property and the project. No other documents, recollections, hearings, writings, or information governed regarding the development of the property and the project. These documents form the basis of development and include all approvals and agreements for all of the, quote, "property" located between Tuscaloosa Road and the Cross Seminole Trail. That is, by the way, 45 plus or minus acres. Together, both documents provide approvals for a large-scale phased development across all of the property. The property, again, 45 plus acres. The project is a phased development project on the property, which generally located on and fronting the north side of Sales, rather, State Route 434 and both sides of Michael Blake Boulevard. That is in keeping with the character of the town center. The initial phase of the project, two or more residential apartment buildings and mixed-use buildings located west of Michael Blake Boulevard. And after we go to 3A, if you could go to 3A on the developer's agreement. Okay? Got it? You have it? Next one, 3A. Yeah. Okay, 3A. This is the approval of A, approval of the project for the apartment site, all right? But part B of this, and if you go to B, all right, this is the master stormwater retention facility. The parties acknowledge and agree that developer has a pre-existing obligation to design, permit, and construct permanent master stormwater facilities for the entire property, that's 45 acres, including the portion covered by this project. And I go forward just a little bit, that third paragraph, pursuant to the existing agreement, developer agrees to design, permit, and construct master stormwater facilities concurrent with the initial phase of the project. That's there in black and white. And by the way, just want to show you something. This is, this is the engineering, final engineering plans approved by the city, which includes the apartments, and includes the master retention facility. That's part and parcel of this first phase. That's there. That's the black and white. That's the truth. Now, in addition to that, the stipulations also show that, in addition to that, the developer has to put in access points and access to street frontage. They also have to put in any new streets constructed by the developer, in furtherance of the project, shall be public streets, and all such streets shall be conveyed to the city, all right? Roundabout, that's also there, concurrent with the permitting and construction of the project, and subject to the approval of the city, which they approved, developer will design, permit, and construct the roundabout, there it is, that's under E, and construct the roundabout of the intersection of Michael Blake Boulevard and Tree Swallow Drive. The eastern end, eastern end of the roundabout will be appropriately stubbed out to allow for future continuation of Tree Swallow Drive to the east. This is black and white. And I want you to understand something, this is Pollock Shore's concept plan. Next one, right there. All right? And the last thing is, that part and parcel of that, the last stipulation was, there's a binding covenant on the property, that there will be no more apartments on the property. That's of the 45 acres, no more. We, we got stuck, and we got at 289. There it is. All right? For that, they changed the concept plan and allowed us potentially put in commercial. But that is something that everyone has decided. Now, there's some legal issues, I'm going to handle that with Allison when we, when I finish, she'll handle the legal points of it, so I don't want to go into that. Now, let's go on to the second or the first modification, modification to the developer agreement. All right, if you can move that, you got that, great. All right, this says, and I want you to go back to 3A, which is the next page. Okay? 3A, okay, 3A says here, that part and parcel of this development, that the developer will improve and add to the city collector, collector road system. And it goes on, and with these improvements, under construction of roadway stormwater, stormwater, landscape, collectively the roadway improvements, that for the amount of money that they, they had put in for the construction, they have received impact free, impact, impact credits for the transportation. They were, they were supposed to use it first for the apartments, but then it goes on that, number one, any extra would go and be applied to the non-residential land uses, first on the portion of the property which the initial phase is, will be constructed, and then second, to any non-residential land use on the eastern portion of Mike, or east of Michael Blake Boulevard until said credits are exhausted. All right? So, they keep talking about, the project is on both sides, it's concurrent, spending a lot of money on that. Now, then they go on in the next, right there, that to B, after you go through this concept plan, the adjusted, adjusted city fee, the city hereby agrees, the city hereby agrees that the final adjusted arbor fee for the project shall be $149,600. Okay? That's them, and it talks about the project. That means the project total, doesn't talk about the initial phase of the project, or initial phases. It talks about the project, the whole project, all right? Now, further, further, and these are further stipulations, go to the next page, okay? And under E, as part and parcel, the conveyance of real property, this is something I didn't even realize, in consideration for the city agreeing to the conditions and terms stated herein, that includes the adjusted arbor fee plus all these other things, get this, the sufficiency are hereby acknowledged, the developer agrees to convey, free and clear of all encumbrances, liens and mortgages, approximately 2.2 acres of real property at the intersection of Tree Swallow and 434, or Tuscaloosa Road. It is right across the street from the Fisher Medical Building. And by the way, 2.2 acres on that prime land is worth, based on the Fisher land price that we did, is worth a conservative $1.7 million. So effectively, we gave you, the city, a $1.7 million land parcel at that point in time. All goes together in what you have to do. In addition, as part of the stipulations under F, we also are taking care of any regulatory signage, lighting, and all the things that have to be done, we were paying for that, and then turning it over to the city. Lastly, under, no, I shouldn't say lastly, under G, number of dwelling units, okay? This is where the city and the developer agreed there'll be no more apartments. That hurt us. No more apartments. It's dedicated to 83. And so what happened is, they went from multifamily, mixed use, and the revised concept plan as set forth in Amendment Three is hereby adopted. That basically said that that's where the property, instead of multifamily, is now commercial, and that's where we are right now. Then the last thing, under performance and maintenance security for public improvements, the letter of credit that the developer gave the city, that they said after everything was done, you will get a letter of credit for any improvements or repairs or anything else that has to be for two years after the project is done. So, the city made an agreement with the developer to do all these things. Now, I'm going to summarize this. Oh, here, if you could do this for me. Could you put this, could you do?
Could you put this up?
This is very important, this summarizes everything that we've done just now. Okay?
We don't have the ability to take a piece of paper and project it.
No, you can't put it up there? Okay.
If you had it on a disc or something, we can do it.
All right. Well, I tell you what, let me read it to you, okay? And I'll get this to everybody. Summary of the work and estimated cost that was done under 2015-2017 DA agreements by the developer. March 10th, 2015 DA. 3A, approval of the initial phase of the development to include apartments and to change the concept plan. 3B, concurrent, the master stormwater retention facility to be constructed for the entire property, 45 plus acres, concurrent, and that's the words that they use, concurrent with the apartments on the east side of Michael Blake Boulevard, on donated land by the developer. That's 6.55 acres, that's a value of $2.6 million. Then, the other stipulations, access, access points and street frontage to be constructed, build new streets and/or road improvement, then convey those to the city, then concurrent with the initial phase of the project, construct the roundabout on the intersection of Tree Swallow and Michael Blake Boulevard, which is the east side of the project. The eastern side of the turn, roundabout will be stubbed out for the future continuation of Tree Swallow Drive to the east, and the road will be conveyed to the city. Then on January 9th, 2017 DA, 3A, project obligation to construct collector roads with impact fee credits to be applied to the apartments, then any credit balance goes to the future development on the east side of Michael Blake Boulevard. Three, the city, that's 3B, the city hereby agrees that the final adjusted city arbor fee for the project, not just the initial phase, shall be $149,660. Three, E, in consideration for the city agreeing to the terms and conditions herein, developer agrees to convey 2.2 acres on Tuscaloosa Road and Tree Swallow across the Fisher Medical Building, land value 1.629. The number of multifamily dwelling units now limited to 283 for the entire property, and the east side of the concept plan will be replaced with commercial. Trees and replacement credit for both sides of Michael Blake Boulevard, including 213 trees on the east side, which by the way, and we'll talk to that in terms of what the mayor's comments were, and then commitment and letter of credit for the maintenance of the roads for at least two years. In total, the conservative cost estimate of the convey- of the conveyance of two major land parcels, new collector roads and road improvements and their conveyance to the city, arbor fees and credits, the property, which is 45 acres, this, the property for the master stormwater retention construction, construction of the lift station and extension of the utility lines throughout the property is over $9 million of cost. These plans were negotiated by the city and developer and incorporated to both developer agreements and, and which are contracts to be relied on by everyone. That's what we've done. Now, I want to go to the mayor's notice and response to these points that he had mentioned in his document. And the document is a special meeting letter and attachments.
I'm going to interrupt you for a second. I, I think I'm being, I'm kind of, there's some little comments here. We would like to set some kind of, shall we say another five minutes to wrap up?
Well, according to this, the word, this is an important issue. You've had social media, you had interview on, on radio and TV. I understand.
For the commission, would you like to set a time limit on this argument?
I think so, because we've heard this, Paul. We've got all the same information and this is a second go around. And there's a lot of data out on this already. So for me, I don't know what the others have to say, but for me, you have shared this once before too.
No, I haven't.
I'm not disrespecting your time. I'm just respecting everybody else's time.
All right. And let me, let me go and correct a few things. Okay? I'll try to do it in five minutes. Okay? Reasons given were not correct nor allowed. This is from the mayor's discussion. Tab A, tab B. If the staff reviewed the developer's agreements, which they did not, because that's not part of the review process, therefore, they did not do a detailed analysis. If they did, the previous fee maybe already have been credited. We did, we did preserve the catalyst. Now, tab C, misrepresentation of facts. In, in this particular situation, it shows that the final engineering plans includes apartments and master retention for the entire property. What it effectively said, and I said this again, which from the mayor's standpoint, he said it's only the western side of, of Michael Blake. It isn't. It's the entire property. The project included, as I repeat, approval of the concept plan for the apartments, master stormwater retention for the entire property of 45 acres, roundabouts, all the things. Now, in addition to that, we go on. And the first modification, um, in terms of what the mayor's talked about is, the mayor stated that the staff did not give him copies of the, uh, developer agreement. Okay? Let me tell you something. Here is email from, from Kevin Sweet, the city manager. This is dated, uh, June 20th, 2025 to the mayor and commission, as well as the city clerk department, as well as the city manager's office, as well as Anthony Garganisi. Uh, this has the attachments of the first and second developer agreements. And it says, during our one-on-one meetings, we discussed the public hearing agenda. Please see attached Winter Springs Holding Agreements relevant to the Seahawk Close. This was Saturday, June 21. In addition to that, I also sent the developer agreements to everybody here on the dais. All right? On top of that, uh, on Monday, the city attorney with, uh, with assistant city manager, with Allison, myself, we talked to this issue just to make sure we were doing it the right way. So, no, everybody had the chance the weekend to look at everything and it was there. Um, the, the other piece here, it says, um, so the developer attorney and the real estate broker at a conference, like I said, the mayor comment is, this is the one where the, the project included only the, the Blake apartments on the west versus what the actual fact is. And I said, the mayor's comment is blatantly wrong. As stated in the developer agreements, the project, the project included Blake apartments, the west, the, uh, on the west, and the master retention facility for the entire property, new streets, roundabouts, and other improvements, all on the east side. By the way, there never was an apartment named Pollock Shores Apartments. Only Pollock Shores Concept Plan for the entire 40, 45 acres. All right? Now, tab F, the mayor states that the fees were only calculated for the west side apartments. Well, wrong. As you can see in the first calculation, there were trees and credits given for the east side also. The fees went from 601,000 to 569,000 to 460,000 to 275,000. And finally, to the adjusted 149,660. The last number was paid fully. The final adjusted number took into account all the work that was being done for the entire property that we worked with the city. We followed the rules. We followed the agreement. And this was agreement made between the two attorneys, Allison and, and Mr. Garganisi. It is very disappointing that the mayor goes on TV and then on Facebook and then on social media to provide a fictional and inaccurate account of this project. Further, he badmouthed the commission by saying they did not know what they were doing, but rather they were the ones that read the documents from the city manager and not the mayor. There's nothing new here. All the details were in the same DA agreements that we have had. Hopefully, we clarified the info in both DAs. Now, the mayor's action caused unnecessary delays in getting permits to start construction, which in turn delayed the start of our tenants' projects. This also put another black eye on the city of Winter Springs as being a city not friendly to quality development. If I was a commissioner on the dais, I would be asking for an apology from the mayor for what he has done and what he has said about the commission, which is not allowed by charter, if you look that up. Now, what I'd like to do at this point in time is bring up Allison Jones and she'll clarify all the legal stipulations. Allison?
Commissioner, seriously, we, we, we said another five minutes, but now that five minutes is also gone. I mean, at what point are we going to like?
I think Allison will be.
Is there anything new that you have to offer?
Yeah, because.
Okay, what's the, go through the new, five minutes.
Good evening, again, Allison Jones, 1508 Highland Road in Winter Park. Um, I think Paul covered a lot of ground. And I think what I would like to do, I'm not going to go through each one of these in detail. Um, but I am the land use attorney for the developer. So in that role, I am charged with not only knowing the law and interpreting the law, but also with interpreting and drafting legal contracts and documents memorializing the law and approvals for this project. Anthony and I worked on those 10 years ago and I have been here from the beginning with this project. So tonight, as opposed to the June 23rd hearing, where we kind of just had a broad brush of, you know, what was going on and we're trying to kind of, you know, make sense of everything i- in a compressed amount of time. Tonight, I'm going to talk about Florida contract law and contract interpretation, because that's the crux of the matter that's before you this evening. The relevant documents are, as shown here, items one and two, as Paul already went through. So we have touched on these before. Everyone's tired of hearing about them, I know. But this is a legal matter. And these documents are the only documents that govern this matter about the arbor fee. That's it. Now, under Florida contract law, when a contract is reduced to writing, it subsumes all other agreements, oral, written, emails, other information, everything into that document. And that document is not messed with by Florida law unless there is significant ambiguity. If it is clear and unambiguous, the terms of the document control. Regardless if, if, if a party says, I don't like it anymore. I don't like it. That's not what I meant. Well, too bad. That is what the document says. That, that is just the state of Florida contract law. Florida is a state that viciously protects its contracts. It is not a state that allows you to come back and retrade the deal afterwards. There is a long line of case law that supports this. Um, so all of the documentation that has been brought up, and first of all, I just have to say, being an attorney, ethics are the cornerstone of our practice. Honesty, ethics, forthrightness. So when I am accused of providing you with misinformation or omitting facts or misrepresenting something in front of a public body, I take that very personally and I take that very seriously. And so I would appreciate a few minutes to just go through and.
Two minutes left, but we offered five and we offered another five. And so, I mean, if there, if, I think you're making your point. I'd like.
Well, I would like, I would like a moment to close this out. I think Paul already went through the meat of it. Um, the development agreement and the first modification, as Paul stated, give you a comprehensive framework of a phased development project. So I think just rolling through this very quickly, we've already, whoops, we've already talked about the definitions which matter. I mean, this is a legal contractual document that defines terms. And those defined terms matter. So if this is before a court of law, a court of law is going to look at the words and the definitions and see how they were defined when we're interpreting them. So it's very important that the project, capital P, was defined as a phased development project on the property, which is located on both sides of Michael Blake Boulevard. So it is the whole property essentially. The initial phase, in the same document, it defines the initial phase as two or more residential apartment buildings and mixed-use buildings located west of Michael Blake Boulevard. So it's very important that it distinguishes between the Blake apartments and the mixed-use buildings and the rest of the project. Okay? So if, if you would like to see the specific parts of all of the documents, I have included them here so that there is no misinformation given. But as Paul said, these are holistic documents. They approve a master development plan and development concept for the entire property. So there are some legal points in these documents that are very important. And you have your own city attorney that can advise you on this. But number one, this agreement will constitute a legal, valid, and binding obligation enforceable against the parties here too in accordance with the terms and conditions of the agreement. Okay? So that's in the original development agreement. It's the entire agreement. This agreement supersedes any other agreement, oral or written, and contains the entire agreement between the city and developer. So all of those emails, all of those documents, everything that was attached to your agenda is dated before the date of this and the first modification. So all of those documents were subsumed into the original development agreement and the first modification. You can check the dates.
And the first modification?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the first modification addresses the arbor fee. So all of those charts and emails and everything involving the arbor fee are dated prior to the date of the first modification. So accord, and, and this language governs the first modification. Those two documents are read as a whole, because the first modification is wrapped into this original development agreement. So, I mean, the interpretation, obviously, we both participated equally in the drafting of it, so it's not construed against either party. But this is very important. This agreement supersedes any other agreement. So that's very important to recognize. Specific performance, strict compliance is required with the agreement. It's a contract. It is considered a contract under Florida law. If there's no strict compliance, the other party can move for specific performance to force judicially the other party to perform. Now importantly, the prevailing party in that action is entitled to recover attorney's fees and costs through all appeals. And also, the city's sovereign immunity in the event of a breach of contract case is inapplicable. So sovereign immunity does not apply in the context of a breach of contract case. That is well-established law in Florida, City of Miami v. Cruz, 342 Southern Third, 741, for your city attorney, which I'm sure he's already aware of it. So the major legal points here, and let me just flip to the end. The major legal points here to take away are what's called the parole evidence rule, which is a longstanding rule in Florida, also King v. Bray, 867 Southern Second, 1224, for your city attorney, who I know already knows this. That states that nothing else is admissible. So if you go to court with these documents, I'm going, I'll, I'll, I'll close it out right now.
Saying that, and you guys keep saying that, keep saying that.
I'll close it out right now.
Okay.
If we go to court on this, all of the evidence that you have presented that allegedly, I don't even know if it shows what you're trying to make it show, it is inadmissible to interpret this contract. Because the plain language of this document is what's going to govern.
Okay.
And, and the plain language says that the arbor fee was paid for the project.
Let me ask Anthony a question.
Yep.
I have a question for Anthony too.
Anthony, so this lady is up here. She says that we are 100% wrong and we go to court and we're going to lose. You're our attorney. You interpret this differently. Is that correct?
Well, I agree that there's an interpretation question. And that's the issue before the city commission is, is how you interpret the, interpret the contract. I mean, I can advise you about, you know, my legal thoughts about it, but at the end of the day, the commission's going to decide. And, you know, parole evidence rule cuts both ways. Okay? To the extent that there's a fuzziness as to what this definition of project is, as defined in the original contract versus the first modification references to project, especially within the recitals, that fuzziness leads to an ambiguity. That ambiguity is the basis under which all those additional documents would be admissible into court.
Anthony, do you, do you mind?
No, 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 no.
So parole evidence fight, you know, cuts both ways, right? If the, if the contracts are clear, unambiguous, um, then extraneous information does not get admissible into court generally regarding a contract interpretation question. So, but the question becomes, you know, is there enough fuzziness? And, you know, you're taking a look at all of the, all of the documents and reading these contracts to, to, to make that, make that determination. And, you know, there appears to be two interpretations of the original modification, I mean, the original agreement and the first modification.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
No, no, no. I think it's time for us to have our discussion.
Okay, but.
No, no.
I'm asking for a clarification, because this is on the record.
We will allow you guys another five minutes at the end. Let, let us have our discussion.
So Anthony, to me, the law, as was kind of shared with us, is a perceived relevant truth. And that's what we have here, perceived relevant truth. I know where I was sitting and you're sitting here. But in that truth, there's documents that are written. Do you feel as our attorney, your word fuzzy, but do you feel as our attorney to advise us that this is within our purview to make our decision based on the contract that you're reading? You know, i- i- is it something that is, if we go to court, going to be, we're going to get shocked because, oh, really? We wrote a bad contract? Or do you feel we wrote a good contract?
Well, I mean, the, in terms of the contract and how it was written and how the adjusted arbor fee provision was inserted into that contract should be abundantly clear to the city commission when staff was preparing that modification. And that modification was prepared by the staff member who did the calculations on the arbor fee.
Right.
And that arbor fee calculation was based on an acreage, right? The commission should really see all of that now that you have those documents. So the, to the extent that there's an ambiguity, right? And all that information comes in, I think you need to ask yourself, well, what are all those documents telling you regarding the interpretation? As I tried to mention to the city commission during one of the previous other, um, just so you could think about it, there are several recitals in the first modification. While the, I agree, there's a provision about entire agreement in the first modification. It says this agreement supersedes any other agreement. Well, another agreement is also the original agreement. Okay? So that has to be taken into consideration and you need to consider, you know, this is, these are just considerations that one of the recitals in the first modification, whereas on December 14th, 2015, the city commission approved the final engineering plan submitted by the developer for the project, capital P, subject to the first modification of development, which was approved by the city commission. Parenthesis, original first modification, a copy of the final engineering plans are on file with the city of Winter Springs. It goes on to say, whereas subsequent to the city commission's approval of the final engineering plans and the original first modification, developer did not execute the original first modification and deliver it to the city. All right? That should be abundantly clear to the city commission now that what happened, based on the records that you have in your outline. The last recital says, whereas the parties now desire to amend the original first modification approved by the commission and approve and execute this new version of the first modification as a condition to the final engineering plans and aesthetic review approved by the commission on December 14th, on December 14th, 2015, as if this first modification was approved simultaneously with the final engineering plans. As Mr. Partika indicated, the final engineering plans, yes, include the Blake Apartments, but also include the master stormwater pond on the east side of Michael, now Michael Blake Boulevard, because that stormwater pond is a master pond was intended to support the entire Phase Two Town Center project that goes all the way to Tuscaloosa Road, all right? As you know, Commissioner, because you were here for much of that.
Yes, sir.
So undoubtedly, there would be some development on the east side of Michael Blake Boulevard because the pond had to be built. And the pond, when the pond was built, there had to be an Army Corps of Engineers permit pulled. You now have background information regarding the trees that were removed regarding the arbor permit. At the time, when the first modification was being renegotiated, the developer asked that those arbor fees for the pond be waived. And you now know what the city staff's response was. No, we're not waiving those fees. They're going to be part of the arbor fee, the $144,000. So there's a lot of information here, Commissioner. You know, I understand the points that the developers making. You know, they have a reasonable interpretation of the contract, but is it the only interpretation? Reasonable interpretation? You know, I think that's what you have to wrestle with. And, you know, to the extent that, to be, you know, my legal position, to the extent that there is this fuzziness on interpretation, all of the documentation that you have and all of those emails that went back and forth between city staff, some of which I was not copied on, and the developer comes in, and the court will use all those documents to try to determine which interpretation of this first modification is the right one according to a court of law. And the risk, of course, to both sides, not just the city commission, is that there is a prevailing party attorney fees provision in that contract. So to the extent that you lose on the interpretation, there's a risk of attorney fees. Now, I may have gone beyond the original question, but I wanted to get some of those thoughts out upfront regarding this matter.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Commissioner Cruz.
So a couple of things first for the residents that they should know. We understand that staff made a recommendation, but staff recommended that developer pay the arbor fee. We had no supporting documents that was provided to justify this recommendation at the time until we have more documents now. As elected officials, we represent the voters and must ensure decisions are well-supported. When this item was first brought to our attention at the commission meeting, all supporting documents should have been provided to commissioners at that time, and of course, we didn't table it, so I think that's partially our fault as well. So we received the agenda only a few days before the vote, which is not enough time to research and review historical context, as you already know. So a couple of things that I have that I pulled up going through all these other documents. And ma'am, I believe you said something at the end there that we're seeing some documents that you don't see. That's not the case. Everything that we have is what you have in the agenda. So I thought I heard you say something along those lines. The agreement that you're talking of, to be clear, is the one from 2017, correct?
I've kind of looked.
Okay. And how many acres are on the property in question on the east side that we're talking about? How many acres do you know?
About eight acres.
Eight point 10 acres?
Eight acres.
Roughly? Okay. And when did your client purchase that property?
If we're capturing this on the record, can they come to the microphone?
When did your client purchase that property?
That's in your chart?
Right.
If you want to flip it up here?
I have it in front of me here.
We can just go through it all. I don't have it in front of me, so I don't know the exact date, but they purchased it in portions from the original property owner. So this portion was purchased later in the original.
Right. It was purchased in July of 2018.
That sounds right.
And when, and the arbor fee was paid in October of 2018?
I don't know the exact date. I'm sorry.
Right.
You'll have to tell me.
That was the, that was the statement that we had in email.
I don't know the exact date, but it was definitely paid. You want the date?
If it's in that email, then that's fine, but.
Anyway, going forward. So you, there was a lot that was said about paying the arbor fee in advance. We heard that a lot, correct, city manager? Everyone?
For the whole project.
Right. So where in the agreement or where in any documents does it say that it was paid in advance?
So you have to go back to the definition of project because the first modification, when it's talking about the arbor fee, it states the final adjusted city arbor fee for the project shall be $149,660, and that was paid all at once by the developer on whatever date you write.
Right. That's not paid in advance. That's paid for the property for the Michael Blake.
But that's not what it says. It doesn't say that it was paid for the initial, or that the arbor fee for the initial phase. That's what refers to the Blake. And, you know.
It was actually March 6, 2017.
Actually, can I clarify something so that everybody understands this one? And I'm trying to help clarify that.
Go ahead.
What I hear is that they keep switching the word project and property. Project and property. They are distinctly two different things. The property is the entire 45 acres. The project is the six and a half, and that is defined very clearly when I have my turn. I will show you how it is very clearly defined, the project. No questions.
That's the definition on the screen, straight from the agreement.
We will get, we will get there. I'll let you guys keep going. I don't want to hijack it.
Mayor, you may not need to turn as we go through this because you've said a lot.
Mayor, if I could, just to answer Commissioner Cruz's question, $16,160 was paid on March 24th of 2017, and $133,500 was paid on October 19th of 2018. Those are the dates of the payment.
Yeah.
So it's very close in time from the time that eight acres was purchased until the time the arbor fee was paid, which I could be wrong, but I think that's kind of quick to pay for arbor fees and get permits. Am I correct on that?
Arbor fees are 6.45.
What is it?
The arbor fees were for the 6.45.
Right. That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah.
Yeah, not the eight.
Yep.
So my understanding is that the arbor fee was paid for the 6.45 acres and not the 8.8 acres, the eight acres. That's the way I'm reading it in all the agreements and the payment, the court documents that I have here, and when it was purchased.
May I, may I respond to that?
Sure.
So if you use that logic, then the one item in these documents that only applied to the six-point-whatever acres that you're talking about.
6.45.
Would have been the arbor fee. But everywhere else in the document, project refers to the larger development as a whole. Initial phase would have been used because you can see here, initial phase is two or more residential apartment buildings and mixed-use buildings located west of Michael Blake. Project.
Property. It says property right there. Property. That's the first phase of the property. Never mind.
I'm sorry.
I understand, Mayor.
Yeah, it's.
No, it doesn't say that.
It's okay. I'll.
But.
It's Commissioner's turn.
Commissioner Baker.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm confused on when I'm allowed to speak and when I'm not allowed to speak.
I don't, yeah, well, we'll let you know. I am fuming.
Okay. So I think one of the things that we're looking at right now is in the recitals, project obligations and commitments. Mr. Partika read from something that he wanted to be displayed up there, and in that reading, it said something about arbor fees while he was reading to us, and we did not have it. I was reading along in the contract, and it did not state anything about arbor fees in that part of the contract. It did, however, talk about any monies left over for transportation and stormwater. That was a very specific bullet point in this part, had nothing to do with trees. So I think that is a very important part that we need to look at. And if there was some sort of, if there was some sort of credit because of the impact fees for the road and the stormwater that were going to be applied to arbor, then we would have an arbor study done showing us how many trees were going to be removed so that we could credit that. But the final project, the final engineering plans that were submitted were only for the six acres. That is the project in this agreement, and with many conversations with staff and our attorney, I continue to get the same response.
Okay. So as we're all up here, Commissioner Cruz.
Something you'd like to add? Yeah?
Okay, cool. Two things that I'm looking for that I haven't gotten yet is the Army Corps of Engineers permit. I mean, maybe there's something in there about these trees. That's one thing I want to look at. And then the other thing is the site work permit. So in the code, it says that work has to be done 180 days after permit issuance for the site work permit. Therefore, why wasn't the trees cleared 180 days after the permit was issued?
I think that would be good to have that response.
Okay.
And I will defer to my client on this if they have additional information, but typically, that grading and clearing work is not done until the permit is pulled for that portion of the project. So as with everything else here, Michael Blake, the concept plan, the stormwater, it was all approved comprehensively on the front end, and the fees were defined comprehensively on the front end. So right now, the final grading permit is what's pending for this portion of the project. This portion of the project was supposed to come online much sooner than it did because, obviously, economic forces are out of our control. So for that reason, my client came back several times over the last 10 years to try to ask for some relief on the prohibition against additional multifamily. I think if that had been removed, you would have seen that in a much quicker fashion. But as it stands, I mean, now we're here. We're waiting for our new mass grading permit for the additional eight-some-odd acres, and we have documents that state that the arbor fee was already paid for the project. So from our position, that is the plain language of the document. And I do just want to call your attention to Section 4 of the first modification that states that all other terms of the original development agreement not modified by the provisions of the first modification remain in full force and effect. So, I mean, my question to you and to Anthony, I was going to ask this while you were speaking, is where is the term project redefined in the first modification? And where is the fuzzy definition in the first mod, like where does it get fuzzy?
No problem. I can answer that for you very quickly and easily.
Please do. That would be wonderful.
Commissioner, or Deputy Mayor, you're up next. We're going to go through this. We will get there.
So.
Okay.
Just really fast, to everybody up here, if you look at the timeline, this started in 2007, okay? And as a project whole, I asked Anthony this question. I asked the density manager this question. I know other commissioners did because it didn't get moving for a long period of time, and the blame was, well, you know, economic downturn, and it got held over and over again. Commissioner Bruce, to your question on permitting, is there's a mechanism in which they keep, just keeping the permit alive fairly, right? I don't know if it's that permit, but that's how they did this. To the extent that we were already in a place where we didn't want any of this development on that land, but we were held because this particular group, the Brotherhood, had the land. So as we sit here now, again, for me, fighting the same project that should have been done in 2007 or told, hey, you know what? You can't do it. Sorry, you lose. We'll kind of have the land cleared. It is what it is, but property rights are what they are, and these developers can just hold the land for a minimal fee. And Mr. Attorney, if I'm wrong, correct me. So now here we are again, after multiple conversations, multiple promises, multiple conversations, multiple promises, and Mr. Partika and I have had many conversations of this over the years because multifamily, I want it commercial, that's Michael Blake Boulevard, that was put in as a favor, he says. It was put in as a, hey, that's how the project's going to be done conversation. Yourself and I and a few of the other members of the other old team were part of that conversation. And so where we sit today, to me, reminds me that from the start, this project has been begging for little ways, forgivenesses, hey, can we, hey, may I? We're where we need to be as far as I'm concerned, and to say that staff at that time made mistakes, they did make mistakes. 6.45 acres is in here specifically for a reason, and the east plant, east pond, as he mentions, is here for a reason. It's all put there because final engineering is very specific, and it was final engineering for a project, not the whole thing, but the pieces were in place so over time, the whole thing could be done. And quite frankly, to everybody sitting up here, if I could have the conversation back from the original time with Mr. Partika, it would not be townhomes. It would actually be all commercial because that was our original intent. So I leave it at that.
Commissioner Baker.
I have a couple of questions. If, if these fees were not legit for current eight acres, why was it requested of us to either honor it as prepaid, but if not, give us the same discount you gave us the first time around? That's a huge question I have. Secondly, for our attorney, I would like to know, or for staff, is since these credits for stormwater and roads, there's this impact fee overhaul, I guess, for future, how much is left of that? And what is it to be applied to? Is it to be applied to arbor? Because it doesn't seem like that, like we have, our impact fees go to certain areas in our budget. So if there's any remaining impact fees for that property, where are they to be applied?
Okay. Which question would you like first?
She can go first. Okay. So can you repeat your question? I'm sorry. I was thinking about that one, and I can answer both if you want.
When the arbor study was done, a $227,000 fee was proposed.
Yes. Okay, I got it. Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Why was it requested to be reduced?
So my client is under a tremendous time crunch on this project. As you know, economic forces are, you know, they change on a whim. They have signed letters of intent with tenants for this project. They have a general contractor who is all but mobilized, ready to go. They have financial commitments to them and to, you know, downstream tenants of this project. So they are, time is at a premium for them on this project. And, you know, Dr. Resnick stated that, oh, this whole project has always been, may I, can we have an extension? I mean, to some extent, that is all development projects because there's so many forces beyond a developer's control that put pressure on the development. But in this case, you know, they have really gone above and beyond at working with the city. They have, Paul went through the list of how much they have donated, how much they have tried to, you know, play ball to move the project forward.
I'm sorry, you're not answering my question.
Okay. Well, then the answer to your question is they needed to move this project forward that night when we first appeared in front of you on June 23rd.
Why did they not go to staff with these concerns instead of bringing it to us?
We did. We did.
At the last minute.
No, not at the last minute. And we were told that this was a legal issue that they did not interpret. So we went to your city attorney, and your city attorney and your city manager said that this was a decision for the commission to be brought before you, for you.
Okay.
So that is how that played out. But this is a very important issue for my client on time, and so that is why that was offered, because time is trading at a premium for them on this. Now, that was resolved during the first hearing because this commission agreed with the interpretation of the plain language of the contract. No one could have anticipated that this has spiraled out the way that it has, which, again, now leads to the escrow agreement that you brought up. You know, they have to be able to move forward with their permits, or their damages just continue to grow on this project with delays, with construction delays, and with tenant delays. So I hope that's answered your question. I can answer your second question if you want me to, Anthony, or you can do it, whatever you, whatever you want.
No, I'll have our attorney answer, please. Or staff, whoever.
On the transportation impact fees?
Yes.
It's just related to transportation impact fees?
Yeah, so that would never be.
They received transportation impact fees because they built Michael Blake Boulevard, which is a collective road. So they were eligible to get the cost that was expended returned in the form of an impact, a transportation impact fee credit that they could apply for the project, and if there was any excess, then they could apply the excess for other phases of the project. And you saw that in the last minute, the former city manager and staff agreed to their request about the transportation impact fees, which I believe came from the actual owner of the property at that time, the former owner, who wanted that put in there. So it was put in there. Where we stand, I don't know. It may have been already exhausted. It may have been already exhausted. And then, if you would permit, I want to just address this whole time crunch issue. The city manager, in his infinite wisdom, which I think was a smart decision to make, he agreed to work with Catalyst on an escrow agreement pending, you know, the time coming up to resolve this. To the extent that there's any time crunch causing damages to them, it's not coming from the city. They have to meet the, you know, letter of credit obligation to do their subdivision. And if the escrow agreement was done properly, there would be no delays, and they would already have their land clearing permit, because the issue before the commission tonight is interpretation on what the arbor fee should be for this eight acres. So, the manager worked, you know, on this escrow agreement to address that whole potential delay issue. And I want to make sure that that is clearly on the record here. And if this thing goes, who knows? I mean, that...
I have a little bit of a follow-up question to that. So, when they created the stormwater drains and pond and the streets, I assume that those trees were removed... There were trees removed and accounted for in an original arbor study with the final engineering plans. So, I think that kind of tells us quite a bit about which trees we're talking about, because there's arbor studies done for this to calculate the amount each time. So, that's...
Commissioner Caruso.
Ma'am, if you don't mind, ma'am. You said that you didn't pull a permit at the time. Is that correct? Is that what I heard you say? For the trees? You didn't pull a permit at the time? That's what you said?
To remove the trees from the eight acres.
To remove the trees from the eight acres?
No, because we were not ready to get a mass grading permit for that property.
Okay. So, if you didn't pull a permit, why would you have to pull a permit if it was already prepaid?
Oh, well, you have to pull a permit for mass grading work regardless.
But you said it was already paid for in advance, which means you should have had the permit.
But we didn't need the permit then. We weren't developing that portion of the property then, just like we built Michael Blake and the roundabout and the connecting streets and the stormwater for the whole project, even though we weren't developing the whole project at the time. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
If I can, can I make a few points?
Yes. You've got five minutes.
Yeah.
Or three.
Yeah. I wish I only had one.
Okay. Good in one. You said it. You said it.
Right. Okay. First of all, most important thing, reading through all of these documents, there is a very clear definition, again, I'm repeating myself, between project and property. The property is the whole 45 acres. The project is the six and a half. I agree with Commissioner Baker that what does streets and stormwater have to do with any of the trees? This isn't a question and answer. I get my five minutes. I get my time. Take a seat, sir. This is... I'm trying to... I am upset. Stop.
I'm listening.
Stop. I get my turn. I represent the residents. This is appalling. The city, for the record, gave the developer a $675,000 gift to help offset the cost of building that road. They're also not mentioning is that on September 27th of 202010, Item 204, the city also gave them $250,000 in cash for the land that went underneath that road. It's really nice to be playing victim. We've done our part. I am not against this project, but the dishonesty is appalling. Yeah, I'm going to say it again. Omission of fact. This... Christian, correct me. The presentation that they put up, that they were trying, that they wanted to go through is public record, correct?
Yes.
If you go to the top of the page, not only, when I said that you omitted paragraphs and cut and pasted things, you did it again tonight! Wait, no, hold on. Hold on. Scroll down. Scroll down. Okay. You see things right there. They're saying "development agreement," and they're putting it right, and they're quoting and highlighting. And she kept saying, "This is the agreement. This is the agreement. This is what everything has to be based on. Florida law says it has to be based on this." Kept going on and on. "This is it." Scroll down. There are things added and subtracted, and items and photos. Keep scrolling. Right here. Well, hold on. Scroll back up. That photograph never appeared in that document. You're... Wait. This isn't... No, I'm making my point to the residents. I'm making my point to the commissioners. It really is... Do me a favor. Go back to tonight's... What I'm looking for is... What I'm looking for is the February 9th, 2015 Pollock Shores Agreement that was in tonight's agenda.
Item 500.
Right. Item 500. It is... Item 500. Now, if you go down, it starts off with, I think it says 2015 to 2009. That's the date. Because there seems to be this confusion about east and west, east and west, east and west. That was that one line in the original agreement, which was then modified, right? And the modified agreement is the final word. Okay. Do me a favor. Go to pages 35 and 36.
I think you're asking for the book, not for that.
Did you open the... Is it? I can't read what you actually opened.
It's the 45-page document.
Go back to item 500.
What page?
And it says, page 35 and 36.
What's the date you said?
It... On item 500 of tonight, talking about the arbor fee, there's one document in there, and it is titled...
It's maps.
2009?
Yes. It's got maps. It's got maps on it.
Yep.
Right? Is what I'm showing. And I'm showing what I'm trying to let everyone see, including the residents, is the maps, the original... Right? If you take this in chronological order, right? There was... The Blake Apartments was originally on both sides. And then, you can read through it. And the developer states in a paragraph, if they can pull it up, we can read it. "After many meetings with city staff and with residents during public meetings to show off the project, we took public input, and we decided to move it away from the Cross Seminole Trail and other reasons that they list." And they say, "We've moved it." And it's all west of Michael Blake Boulevard at that time. So, there's a reason why it said east and west in that original document, okay? That's what I'm trying to tell you. Now, when we get into that second development, or the modification of the agreement, let me be real clear. I'm going to say this again. I've said it before. Whereas, this is the, right, first page, right here at the bottom, right? This is the modification of the original agreement. Whereas, on December 14th, 2015, the city commission approved a final engineering plan submitted by the developer for the project. Very clear. So, you go to December 14th, 2015, and you look it up, and it defines the project very clearly. Item 505, the project. "The community development department planning requests that the city commission consider approval of preliminary final engineering plan, aesthetic review, and first modification of the development agreement for a total of 279 multifamily units located on the east side of Tuscaloosa Road, north of 434, and west of Michael Blake Boulevard." Period. It's right there. No, sir. It's my turn. You've had an hour, sir. Stop. You've had an hour. We continue to go around and around about this stuff. Folks, I can go on and on. This isn't a... This isn't two-part is disagreeing about a contract. This is ignoring the contract for financial gain. This is cutting and pasting and then doing it again. And this, I'm appalled. This absolutely should not... Folks, I can go on and on and on. This goes over and over and over again. Through these documents, it says, "West of Michael Blake Boulevard, west of Michael Blake Boulevard." Over and over, it talks about six and a half acres. That you come back here again and double down? It's appalling. It's... As a representative of the residents, I'm standing up for the residents. This is appalling. And I... I'm done.
Can I make the motion?
Yes. Make the motion. Sir, we're done. The motion.
So, if everybody's okay with it?
Easy, easy.
If everybody's okay with it?
He has served his community so well. He and I disagree on this, and I'm sure he doesn't consider me a friend, but I respect the hell out of this guy. He's done a lot for our community. But we can disagree and move on.
So...
Deputy Mayor.
To make a motion, I'll make a motion on item 500 for reconsideration of the arbor fees for Blake Commons Platt area to reinstall the $277,000 arbor fee cost as was originally intended on the original document. The motion is made by the deputy mayor.
Deputy Attorney, does that make sense?
Yeah. Just point of order. Can you restate the amount?
Was it two?
It's two... Twenty-seven thousand.
Two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Sorry. Two hundred and change. Christian, will you correct me on that to restate? Two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars.
If that's your motion, I don't know if there'll be other commissioners that would second that, but from a procedural standpoint, it's to rescind the previous decision regarding the development agreement and insert the language that was submitted with the $227,400.
Do approve that, staff.
Okay. I can change it. I thought I said that, but okay.
No, you said reconsider.
You did say rescind. I thought you said reconsider. That might said, and then reconsider.
Okay.
I said rescind the original vote and then reconsider.
All you need is to rescind and then to approve the agreement that was originally presented to the commission by the staff with the arbor fee provision for $227,400.
Christian, can I make that?
That is the correct amount. Two-two-seven, four-zero-zero.
I'm sorry to nitpick you, because there's an issue about whether the commission could reconsider and...
Right.
I'll make a motion to rescind the original vote and reconsider the original document to the fee of $227,400 as was presented.
Okay. Is that made by the deputy mayor? Is there a second?
Is that correct?
May I request a discussion?
Mr. Partika just gave something to Commissioner Bruce, so...
Well, let's just start. There has been a motion made. Is there a second? Then we can pause for a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Seconded by Commissioner Baker. Commissioner Bruce, what would you like to ask?
Yes. Attorney Garganese, question for you. If this agreement talks about the entire project for stormwater and transportation, why wasn't the arbor fees detailed at 6.45 acres in the agreement? Why wasn't it... Why was it silent to say this is only for the initial phase? Everything else is for the entire project, stormwater and transportation, but these arbor fees are only for 6.45 acres? Why wasn't that encompassed into the agreement?
I don't know if I can answer that question. I mean, you saw the emails that were in the agenda package.
So, exactly. Why wouldn't you utilize that language if that's really how you feel?
What do you mean, "I feel"? I mean, the language on the arbor...
Well, obviously, you say this is only for the initial project, correct? Arbor fees? So, why wasn't it stated that?
It was calculated using the 6.4 acres. And that was the language that the staff recommended be put in the agreement.
But the stormwater and transportation's for the entire project, but the arbor fees were just for the initial phase?
Transportation was only for the Michael Blake Boulevard, and the application of the credits at the request of the property owner could... Any excess credits could apply, if there is any excess credits, to other portions of the property.
On the east side and the west side?
There was no limitation.
So, the agreement for stormwater, the agreement for transportation, entire project, but arbor just for the 6.45 acres?
And the... Don't forget about the pond.
The pond. The pond was on the east side.
East side.
So, the pond is the stormwater.
Yeah. The stormwater, the arbor fees regarding the Army Corps, as I understand it, was in that number.
Did, in the Army Corps of Engineers permit, which I'd really like to understand what the number is, so I can pull it if nobody can give it to me, is the... Are tree removal detailed in this Army Corps of Engineer permit? Or do we have any language? Do we know what the permit states?
I don't have a copy of that permit. All I have is to go by is, there's an email that's in the... Couple of emails addressing the arbor fee with respect to the pond. One was Mr. Stevenson adding the trees that were taken down for the pond into the calculation. And then, there was a request by the developers to waive the arbor fees for the pond, and city staff's response was, "No, the city's not waiving those fees."
I did see that in an email, but I also saw some other correspondence that I think was resolved prior to the agreement that was silent as well. So, there's a lot of information not included. Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to make a point. On January 31st, 2017, Seminole County Clerk of Circuit Court and Comptroller, the first modification agreement, which clearly defines the project, same document, page 3, clearly defines to the dollar, the arbor fee. Clearly defines it. This isn't something missing. It's right here. And then, we have all the other backup data of emails, conversations, discussions, and all the other stuff. The arbor fee for the project, it's called "the project," big "project," underlined, and then it's defined in the same document. What is the project? Here it is. And it defines it as the six and a half acres. It lays it out. It's there.
Can you show me where it lays it out for the six and a half acres?
What's that?
Where does it state six and a half acres?
Well, what it does is, what it's... So, what we have is abundantly clear what the arbor fee is, abundantly clear what the project is, and then on all the backup data, it talks specific, all the emails, all the other correspondence, the endless reams of information say six and a half acres.
But why is there a legal description of 45 acres, then?
That's for the property, not the project. That, again, is the key to this entire discussion, is there's a property, then there's a project.
Victoria, may I for a second?
Please.
Okay. So, when this whole thing was started, right? Think of a whole square. There's all of these different moving parts. If you go to where Fauxlock is, on the right-hand side, there's a big parking lot that is over there, right? Part of that was part of this discussion, because there was all these different pieces of land. So, when you take the overlay of all of the land, what was the infrastructure needed to get people to come in and out? Because if you can remember, and it still is today, town center is actually very poorly designed for in and out. So, part of the conversation was in and out. Road structure was a big part of this, as well as stormwater runoff. So, as part of the project, if you will, it had to be somewhat master-planned. The piece by piece, the piece by piece, when will it come? The piece by piece, the piece by piece, when will it come? How will it come on the actual development was different than the infrastructure. So the two pieces are there. So the trees are part of development, not infrastructure. So when you separate those two concepts, then this makes a lot more sense because tree mitigation happens when you develop it. But infrastructure had to occur because whether it's developed or not, people had to be able to drive in and drive out. And at the same time, Winter Springs Village was very concerned because they were having exactly what ended up happening, possible runoff onto their property.
Yes.
So all of those things were happening at that time. So when you separate those two, then it can make a lot more sense.
Okay. Well, when you talk about two things being the entire project and just one thing just being one phase, sometimes you like to differentiate that and, and clarify that.
Lawyers probably should have done a better job.
That's fair.
Hopefully that helps a bit.
All right. So the motion's been made, it's been seconded. Is there further discussion? If there's none, Christian.
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Resnick.
Aye.
Commissioner Caruso.
Aye.
Commissioner Bruce.
No.
Okay, and the motion passes. And we move forward then, let's see, we've dropped item 501, two, and three. We'll go to new business, and I will open the floor.
I just have two things under new business which are really fast, and I don't know, I know I brought it up last time, I don't know how we remedied it, but conservation easements along the waterways, did we, did city manager, I know we said a future meeting, and I know we're waiting for them, is that something we're including in conservation easement, not conservation easement, but just easement for?
Yeah.
I pointed over there because he was sitting there, but we're waiting for the project?
Yeah, I think that was reviewing it and analyzing with, so as I mentioned prior, Kim Lee Horn and the staff are doing a deep dive into all of the pond access creeks throughout, looking at areas, and there's probably, you know, sort of looking at potential locations that easements would be required for the city to be able to properly maintain the creeks and do that. So it's sort of a, kind of going down parallel paths of looking at that. Obviously, Kim Lee Horn isn't working on legal easements, but, um, you know, Anthony and his team will be brought into when we get to that point. But right now, it's really identifying the critical locations and areas to really solidify getting easements so that the city can go in and, and maintain properly moving forward.
Okay. Two more really fast. One, and this may be under new business, it may just be me, but Sherwood Boulevard, city manager, is, if you're going, especially going north, has a lot of potholes and really roadway issues attached to it. Um, I don't know if anybody else has driven it, but I don't know if there's any other streets where we could kind of take a look and see if we're just fixing the streets. And I know we can't do a full paving over it, but.
I think that one in particular, they were, they're going to replace the water main.
That's on the left-hand side. This is the Sherwood going up to Shepherd on the right-hand side, going northbound. It's just got.
Gotcha.
And I don't know if we just want to take a look at it.
Will do.
Thank you. And one more, this is for all of us. I know Brian and I were chatting about it, and then I almost got run over, so e-bike safety. I know some other cities are doing things with it, and I'm not asking us to jump up and make any decisions, but I would like us to consider asking the police or somebody to start looking at guidelines, things like that. And it's really for me, because when I say almost got run over, sidewalk, like they're doing, I don't know, 30, 35, 40 miles an hour on the sidewalk. Um, I know people concerned, no helmets, no this, no that, but maybe if we as a group can say, start looking at this, consider looking at this.
If I can add to your comment, I think that is a very important point. I will continue to be very concerned that with potentially a Wawa coming in, a Chick-fil-A, a hardware store with a restaurant end cap, and all of this development with the high school behind us and all of the housing, that we have got to stay focused on, on pedestrian safety, and those kids coming from high school are going to want that Chick-fil-A, and they're going to want that Wawa, and man, I will not be able to sleep at night if a child gets hurt and we haven't done absolutely everything in our power. So I'm not sure where we go. There's a, you know, there is, there are a couple of organizations that work throughout central Florida, and possibly the state that do like pedestrian studies, or where they will redesign one inner, I think it's like 3,500 bucks per intersection or something. I've got some emails, I think I, I forwarded it to city managers, email, maybe a month ago, says, hey, when time's appropriate, let's take a look at this. I think we do need to, it's like walk bike, central Florida is one organization, there's several others. But it is, central Florida is one of the largest killers of pedestrians in the country, and, and man, I want to make sure we do everything we can. Mike, you know?
I, I just putting it out there for all of us in the new business to think about, and maybe we bring some guidelines to staff, or we just say, hey, staff, let's start taking a look at it. I know some cities are outlawing it, I'm not saying that. I just want safety.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think that's really important.
So, I'm done.
Anyone else with new business?
Um, I do, real quick. Right before this meeting, I got a text message from a concerned resident regarding the new utility billing auto payment, said it's very un-user friendly. I've not had a chance to troubleshoot it myself, but he was given a detailed description of how to do it, and he said he still couldn't figure it out. So I'd like something maybe to be looked into, maybe some detailed response on, on how to utilize the new utility billing with auto payment, maybe a little bit more user-friendly so that our residents can understand how to utilize it.
Awesome. Yeah, that is a concern, and I'll be honest with you, guilty myself. We have to figure out, we have to go in and re, anyone who's on autopay, you have to go back in and re-establish an account. And, and yeah, so we're trying to get that word out. We have not done so, and the mayor and I haven't done so, and we need to do it.
The mayor and I? Third person?
Well, yeah, my wife is the boss, so, yeah.
Oh, so she's the mayor?
Would you like to see? Would you like it?
Would you please take the seat? Yeah.
She's quiet, we want her up.
Okay. Uh, all right. That then brings us, if there's any other new business?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, then we'll go to reports.
City manager.
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of, few brief updates. So we had a kickoff, myself and the finance director had a kickoff meeting with our consultant Pegasus Engineering and the members of Florida Commerce. Florida Commerce is the one that is managing the, providing the grant for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Matching Program, which is a new program that matches the 25% of what would be the local share normally. So this new, um, new, new program through, essentially is a HUD, federal HUD, uh, program that David actually had referenced during his presentation. We had that kickoff meeting this morning with Florida Commerce and their team to start that project, and that's for the police safe room and the public works generator. Again, that when those projects were approved and moved forward, the city was looking at a pretty sizable local share. Fortunately, through this new grant, and this is the first time they've rolled out this matching grant, usually HMGP grants are responsibility is 75-25. So good kickoff meeting, and you know, there's no doubt, it is heavily, heavily paperwork burden, like many of the federal grants and, and the like, so there's going to be a lot of staff time and our consultant resources to be able to do that, but I think based on the dollar value certainly is, is worth the effort. So that meeting kicked off today, we, and that starts our timeframe. We have 45 days to do some certain, certain things with reporting and so forth. But that is moving forward. David mentioned, I won't repeat it really, the creek debris cleanup wrapped up last week. The sediment, pre-construction meeting is Wednesday. They'll start to see that working and moving forward on the sediment removal at the, at the crossings, at the creek crossings. That'll be, that'll be exciting to see starting to happen. Winding Hollow, Winding Hollow Turn Lane is moving along. The mast arm was installed, should have been installed today, which will allow them to begin the finishing touches on that turn lane as well as the sidewalks. And then just so that the folks are aware, you folks are aware, we have the SRF, the State Revolving Funds. That's just an update on that because there was some discussions and, and presentation with regards to us moving forward with the hurricane portion of the post Milton hurricane portion of the SRF money. We received official notice that due to the high demand of applicants, that they're not going to consider those at the same time as the priority list meeting. The priority list meeting, our application, and there isn't separate applications, they're considering them all as, as the same applicants. But because of the demand of the request on the post Milton hurricane, which actually is, you know, is a real substantial, if we're hopeful that we can continue to be a strong potential recipient for that, that would result in any type of grant received, 100% that grant received, 50% of it would be forgiven, and 50% of it would be at a zero interest. So that, that's something that we're actively making sure that we are, but we don't have a date on that. We were hoping that that was going to be considered at the same time as this priority list meeting, but at a minimum, we're moving forward the priority list meeting application for the standard SRF, and we'll keep you apprised on, on where that, where that goes. But I think we have a very strong application, and you know, it's looking positive for that, so. Then the only other thing I just want to just introduce and say hello to Brianna Levine. She's our new public communication specialist. I mentioned it, she's, she's sat through this long meeting with us tonight, so I wanted to welcome her officially, but so the commission notes, again, working under Matt, our communications director. Brianna joins us as our new publication, uh, public communication specialist, so welcome.
Welcome.
That's all I had, Mayor.
Just in time for hurricane season.
No report.
I just wanted to mention that I'm serving as the city's representative on the Seminole 250 Planning Subcommittee. Just looking at the ways to commemorate, you know, the 250th anniversary of the country coming up next year. I just told them that I would say, so we have public meetings, the next one is on Thursday, actually looking for input from stakeholders throughout the county, if anyone's inter, if anybody's involved in a nonprofit 501(c)(3) community group, cultural heritage group, et cetera, et cetera, come out to the Board of County Commission Chambers, August 14th, 6 to 8. We'll be taking public input on ways you'd like to see the 250th celebrated, and then later next month, the September 8th, 5 to 7, and September 25th, 6 to 8, we'll be looking for any Seminole County citizens to come and give public comment on, again, ways they'd like to see the 250th commemorated. So there's representatives from every city, Seminole State College, Seminole County Public Schools, the airport, and we're all, yeah, doing that. So if anybody has questions about those dates, they can reach out to me, and like I said, I'm on that committee representing the city. So that's all I have.
Can I piggyback on just something that you said?
Sure.
I don't know if I sent you the email or if I just mentioned it in passing. So the Daughters of the American Revolution have reached out to me.
Yes, we did, we have talked about that.
And you have talked to them.
Yes.
Okay, great. Just a real quick, they, historically during the Revolutionary War, the communities would pick a tree, they, they would call them the liber tree, and it was the, the tree where the community would gather and exchange news and opinions and talk about, you know, what was going on. And so what we'd like to do is find a specific tree. It would, we've got plenty of trees that are 250 years old, which is interesting, but we want one somewhere centrally located, like somewhere really accessible. We've got some magnificent trees in our community, but they're kind of removed. We want to, we're going to work on that, and I, I think it's a great idea, and a really nice little symbolic, and they will pay for it, like a bronze plaque or something that will go there, and, and something to kind of figuratively commemorate the 250th anniversary of our country. There's the start, so. Sorry about that, I interrupted.
Commissioner Bruce.
Love that idea, and I think a good candidate might be this tree on the Catalyst property that they're preserving, and I would like to recommend that, I was going to say that preservation actually be detailed in the developer's agreement, because it's not, and I don't want that to get missed again. In addition, we all went to Choices and Learning this morning for first day of school, and to commemorate their status of top schools in Florida, they're now at number eight versus number 17, and so they're growing, and their, their, their aspirations are number one. And so it was wonderful to see all the kindergartners and elementary schools come in, and it was awesome that we all were there. My Howell Creek HOA meeting last month has been rescheduled for August 27th. In addition, I have volunteered for Florida League of Cities Mid-County to be, I forget the term, I think it's an ambassador, and then in additional with the Seminole County Schools, and another ambassador program, to learn the school district and have feedback into our students' environment. And also just want to reiterate that I have asked for, on the next agenda meeting, to discuss Arbor Tree mitigation advocacy and how the mitigation, the Arbor funds are utilized.
Commissioner Baker.
Uh, we had a Calno meeting this past week, and one exciting thing that came up from that meeting was there's a new public transit that's going to be offered come October. It's called Scout, and they'll be utilizing Volkswagen electric buses to do this. It is a on-demand service, so it will come to your home and pick you up, or your work, or wherever you happen to be. You may or may not have ride shares with you. If you are under 18, you will not. And it will have a tiered pricing, so elderly, disabled, low income will have a much lower price than the rest of the residents in Seminole County. The pricing will be based basically on five different zones. So our zone is called Howell, and basically if you go anywhere within the zone, it'll be one price. If you go outside of the zone, it'll be another price, so on and so forth. This will be the only public transit that goes to Sanford Airport, so that's huge. It does not have the same hours as like, say, an Uber or Lyft, so it's not meant to be used at night, late at night. Anyhow, it ends at like 9:00 or 10:00 PM, depending on what night it is, and it's going to be utilized a lot for like medical visits, things like that, is what they're anticipating. It'll be about 40 cars to start. They will have drivers, and all of the drivers will be background checked, but the cars will have the potential to possibly do autonomous driver later down the road. So I put a card out on this podium stand where you can pick up the agenda, and we have some here on staff too, but the app to download is called Freebee, two Bs, and you can go ahead and set up an account. They're soft launching the beginning of October, hard launching October 15th. So just thought that was super cool that the county is doing that. It is not going to completely replace Lynx, but it is going to eliminate a lot of the routes that aren't being utilized. So that's all I have.
Yeah, that's actually, if I can, what is, the Seminole County, all of us as residents in Seminole County, put millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars into Lynx and the bus services, and we rarely get that, they run so rarely, it's not efficient. New technology, you know, who builds a better mousetrap? Those Uber-type services, so they're going to, instead of contributing, you know, $20 million towards services that we, that are not convenient, we don't get to use, they're thinking outside of the box.
Yeah.
Commissioner, thanks for taking part of those.
Something really cool about this too is it's, it's going to be paid for by the riders for the most part, as well as through advertising on the app. So every restaurant or business in Seminole County will be listed as a destination, and those restaurants will be given the opportunity to put in specials or advertising deals to the riders as well, so.
Just to be clear, this is still substantially cheaper than Uber or Lyft.
Yeah, an example they gave is maybe somebody that follows, falls into the lower, or the, the lower pricing bracket, might be $2 one way to go somewhere within their zone, so.
Yeah, versing your citizens and everyone else's is awesome.
Yeah.
On-demand service door-to-door, yeah, it's great. Yeah, uh, thank you for that update, really important.
Deputy Mayor Resnick.
Thank you. Although a little bit ago, coffee with a cop, police department, thank you so much for putting us together. It was on the west side, very well attended, in my opinion.
West side.
What?
The west side.
West side, yeah. Very well attended, different faces, it was great. I like when your team comes out, and the community appreciates it too. Also, I had a meeting with Parkstone here at City Hall with staff, and I think we had a really good meeting, we're moving things along, so that is good. We do have an extended timeframe, so we shouldn't, you know, we're looking at things a year or a year and a half out, but us, Parkstone, and St. John's Wort Management, so good start there. Commissioner Bruce, as you said, today was first day of school. My day started at very early this morning with a high schooler, we went to take him to school, and then I went over to Choices and Learning, where I, I really appreciated the high school kids were just as excited as elementary school kids. You know, by Friday, they won't be, but at least this morning, the high school kids were excited to be there, and then elementary school kids. You know, Choices and Learning is doing a great job, I think all of our Seminole County schools are doing a really good job, but you know, one thing that was shared with me today by the principal, when people talk about competition and why they're doing so well versus where some of the public schools are kind of struggling, is the culture. And you could see that while we were there this morning, that Choices and Learning culture is definitely family-based and very inclusive, so if Seminole County principals are listening, you know, me with Dr. Rodriguez and can figure out what's going on right there, but they're doing a really good job. I like that. I've shared this before, Rotary is picking, putting together our pickleball tournament, so you know, publicly, please, people who are here in Winter Springs, sign up and play. There's a men's division and a women's division. I know we don't have a mixed doubles division, Mr. Baker, but you know, ladies, you can join the men.
I'm going to join the men, I think.
Hey, come join the men. We would love to have everybody out there, make it a really big Winter Springs thing, but October 11th is that. big Winter Springs thing, but October 11th is that. Um, something, and I know most commissioners were not here at the time when I brought this up, but, um, we are back at Veterans, I didn't say this during the Veterans thing, but we were gonna do something for Jerry Marino, and last year we were gonna do something, we didn't decide what it was, um, we waited over a year, so I don't know if we can get staff to do something really fast, or think about something, but at least at the Veterans' Memorial, maybe we put a plaque up there, maybe we put something for him, but he was so much a part of our community, it has been over a year since he's passed, but, um, just something to think about. Um, and then lastly, you know, we have League of Cities coming up, for me, that is, um, the nerdy time for me to go learn a lot about what other cities are doing, get really connected with ways we can bring the future to our city, and so my next commissioner meeting, I'll be bringing back all of that. All right.
Commissioner Caruso.
This morning was fun at Choices and Learning, Chief and the deputy got more high fives than I did, rightfully so, but I'm jealous. No, it was, it was nice, it was great to see all the kids and the families happy. Um, also, I want to say a big thank you to Northland Church and Mercy Road for allowing me to donate 120 backpacks on their behalf to the kids in the community who need them the most, I believe we've passed out almost all of them, I believe, right, Chief? Also, I had a, uh, back-to-school supply drive on August 29th at Black Hammock, I'd like to thank them for allowing us to have the facility for that, we did very, very well with the supplies, I handed out a lot, I went to a couple of the local schools, principals were very happy, they were very appreciative, and I still have more supplies, surprisingly, so if you know anyone, please, take them, I need to give them out, because they're sitting around, so if you know anyone, please, don't hesitate, you can have as much as you want. If you know a family in need, please, I'm all, I'm a, I'll, I'll bring it to them, we can meet at the police department, I don't care, that's it.
Mayor McCann.
Okay, uh, roll through real fast, uh, there was a, uh, an online, there was a meeting, talking about, uh, 417, uh, just as a reminder, right, 417 is being widened, we're getting sound walls on 417 from Aloma all the way to, well, the walls are different, but the widening goes all the way to Lake Jessup Bridge, when that project is finished, they will be adding two more spans to 417 on the inside, right, making four lanes in each direction again, uh, there's enough room in the middle of the two spans to add two more spans in, in between. Um, the, looks as if the county has now chosen the property and a tentative, uh, uh, what's the term I'm really looking at, an airport connector, basically a new exit off 417, which would be just before the toll booth, so you go over 417, and then before you hit the toll booth, there will be a new exit for the airport and 415, if you're one of those folks like I am, that if I go to the beach, I like New Smyrna, and you want a quick way to get there, that 415, you'll take that exit, you'll, won't have to go all the way down to Lake Mary Boulevard and around, so lots of changes coming, the county just announced, um, a big sports complex right next to the airport, this, again, will help with that, there's a lot of growth coming to Seminole County, good or bad, it's coming, um, but really kind of interesting stuff. Uh, a couple weeks ago, the Seminole Historical Society held, they did an unveiling, I know Commissioner Bruce was here, right, we're, I think everybody was there.
I was.
You weren't there, right? Really fascinating.
Bacon was there.
It was Bacon was there, yeah, no, it grew, so, it was fascinating, you know, they, they found, uh, there's a professor who does a lot of work, and she went to England, and she was rum, going through, right, and over the years, and she got, they found a map, uh, that includes Seminole County from 1685, I believe it was, fascinating, really just kind of cuts a little piece of Lake Jessup. Uh, one other really cool fun fact that I learned that day, they have a, it's not really a coin that's dated, and, man, I forget the, the explorer's name, but I found out that Winter Springs, there's a, there's a retired, uh, Seminole County firefighter who lives in Winter Springs, is a Winter Springs resident, found this coin from an explorer dated right about that same time in the late 1600s.
Seventeen.
Which would make Winter Springs the first where you can prove someone was in Seminole County. Sanford's older than us, Sanford's got different things, right?
Seventeen hundreds.
Cities are going, they've been around a lot longer, but we have proof that a person stood on the banks of Lake Jessup, right along, somewhere right along, um, Center Winds Park, found this coin, that they landed there, and it's really fascinating, I'm waiting, we'll get more information, and we'll push it out as a community, 'cause I think it's something to brag about and be proud of. Are you gonna burst my bubble?
For the historical record, 1765, not 1685.
Oh, the map.
1765.
Okay, thank you, okay.
And you're probably talking about Bartram.
Yes, it was Bartram.
It was William Bartram.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, so at any rate, really neat, I'm, I'm a history buff, I got the dates wrong, but really, it's fascinating, really good stuff.
That's history.
It really is cool, okay, uh, uh, dude, leadership of Pete Gaffney, the principal of Winter Springs, he held Bear Bash, they do it every year, it's, when he found, he did the research, and if children, high school students sign up for any group, whether it's Spanish, band, football, if they connect to one group, the, the chances of them graduating from high school go up something phenomenal, 15 or 20 times, and so he's been a real champion at holding this big group, and every time you walk around, as you walk, none of the halls with him, he goes, "What club are you in? What club are you in?" "Hey, did you go to math, you know, the math club today? Did you go?" That, you know, he's really an amazing leader, we do have leaders, whether it be Jordan at, at Choices, or, or Pete at the high school, really phenomenal, uh, today is the first day of school, countywide, uh, police wearing in, Chief, great job, looks as if we got three great hires that are really, really, really been great. Commissioner, thank you for attending, it was really, those are always super important, and, and to show them our commitment as they're in the middle of showing their commitment by raising their right hand is really great, and with that, I'm done.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I could just, um, provide a response to Commissioner Bruce's comment, and so that residents are, no, I'm not sure when, um, when that resident you had mentioned was on there, but on Friday, we did, um, add a, a user how-to guide, which is pretty, two of them, one for auto pay and one for, um, you know, non-auto pay, uh, but lays out, that's one of them's like five pages, and the other one's three, but really does provide picture detail, and if that doesn't do it for you, you're more than welcome to come into City Hall during City Hall operations, right to our customer service window, walk in the front door, the left side, uh, we can walk you through it, but I think with that how-to, those two how-to user guides, I think will be very effective, um, picture diagrams and such, so winterspringsfl.org, right on there, there's a tab that says utility billing, uh, right from the homepage, easy to launch, and you just open up those two PDFs, and I think you should be in, um, good shape. Again, if you do not, uh, you need assistance, you can always call the customer service line, as well as, um, certainly come into City Hall, and, and we'll certainly help you out there, so, just wanted to provide that.
Awesome, thanks. That brings us to public input, who would like to go first? Mr. Gallo. Ooh. Watch yourself.
Getting old. Art Gallo, 199 Nandina Terrace, uh, I wanted to put in a plug for the Winter Springs Police Department, their Citizens Academy is coming up the end of September, um, it's a great opportunity to learn all about the police department if you've never been to one, um, I've been to two now, 'cause I failed the first time.
Wow.
So Chief made me come back.
What, no background, yeah.
It's, it's great, you know, I mean, you load weapons, you go to the fire range, load weapons there, shoot at targets, different weapons, uh, drive around in, uh, in the cars, and show you a little bit of what the police department can do on the road, um, you get to see a lot of different vehicles, and more, the most importantly is you get to meet a lot of the different officers that work in our great, the police department, so I highly recommend it, and applications gotta get in, uh, pretty soon, I think, in sometime in December, but I did want to mention that. Um, I thank you for the discussions on Agenda Item 500, I think you all did a great job in discussing the issues, um, I had no problem with sticking around for hours to hear the conversations, uh, because it's important, um, so I wanted to thank you all for that, and I think the lesson learned is if, you gotta write a good contract, um, from my contracting experiences, the hardest thing is to write requirements, what are your requirements? If you can't define them, you're not gonna get them, and then you end up with these kind of debates in the end, it's not good. Uh, I noticed, and there's a 501, I know we're not talking about this until next time, but fund elected officials tuition for Leadership Seminole. I've spent enough years in, in the Navy to know that one of the first things that people attack is your training budget, and that's the worst thing we can do, is, if, if I can give you any advice at all, it's, you don't want to take away from training, you want good training, and you want to support people's training, and you want to fund it, because you'll pay for it in the end in other ways. Uh, and last, thank you, Commissioner Bruce, for your hometown hero nomination, uh, reading the, reading the, uh, resumes of the other candidates, they were phenomenal, and the, the individual that you selected as your home term handle, well, unbelievable resume he has, so he's well-deserving, and I'm really happy for him, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Ms. Shaper.
Gina Shaper, the Winter Springs Village, um, I am members with a lot of different cities to see what they say about stuff to do and how we might be able to improve, and the city of Winter Park has a Welcome to Coffee Talk, and it's the city manager, this was just posted in August 7th, and I think that would be a great idea for you all, just, um, just pick two commissioners or whatever, and, or the city manager, and talk to residents, see what their ideas are and whatever, I think it would be where sometimes people say to me, "I'm afraid to get up there and talk," but if they meet you all, I just said, "Just think of them in their underwear," okay, but what I'm saying is, it's, it's just, you know, it's just get over it, you know what I'm saying? But if they know you, or they met you, they're just regular people, so, um, I think that would be like an interesting thing to do, and, um, like they had a coffee shop that donated the coffee for it, or whatever. Also, um, just my question about, um, the item 500, um, Dreamfinders paid an ARBER fee, as far as I know, so, um, I'm just making that a point, also, we paid the city for the light on Michael Blake, so if they had funds that they're supposed to do stuff with, how come we paid for it and they didn't? That's another question, um, and I know you're not allowed to answer, but, and also for all commissioners, I'm asking for your help, and I've done this before, and you have more juice than I do, however, the trail with the electric bikes is totally ridiculous, and I need you to talk to the commissioners that are the county commissioners, which they don't hold their meetings at like regular times, which regular people can go to, and they need to address this, because it's becoming where regular people, I live right next to the trail, you can't walk on the trail, okay, unless you want to get run over, and nobody's out there, and I know, I love our police department, trust me, but what I'm saying is, nobody is patrolling it, so it really does need to be addressed, um, so, thank you for your time, have a nice night.
Thank you. Ms. Weisman, I'm assuming? Yeah, sure, right?
I was expecting a team with a street wiper, then she broke it some night.
Uh, okay.
Uh, Leah Weisman, um, with the e-bikes, golf carts, I forgot, there's like, uh, any of those motorized vehicles, if they go faster than pedestrians can walk, we need to make some rules on it. What scares me is on the road, golf carts, they go fast, some of these bikes can go 45 miles an hour, so they basically could get a speeding ticket even though they don't have a driver's license, so we do need to seem to make rules on that. In the olden days, we say bicycles always go on the street, not on the sidewalk, but I don't know how they would do it with the trails, so, anyway, and the other thing, I know this now sounds silly, but the coffee with the cop, there were so many police cars, including state cars, I may suggest that you guys have a sign of some sort, because I had a woman pull in there in total panic, and I'm like, "Oh, we're just having a good coffee party." "Oh, really?" But, 'cause we had state police there too, maybe a sign, "Join us for coffee," you, you know, Winter Springs Police Department or something, because it really looked like something terrible was going on.
Intimidating.
They would've been in parking lots.
Yeah. It was a good event.
No robberies at that time.
No, no, uh, nobody speeding on 434, yeah, anyone else? Anyone else? Yep, you're, no, okay. Then I will call it, as Commissioner Baker said, thank you, we are adjourned.
What was the program called?
Scout.
Uh, see, one.